Maintain local control. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen, consideration and action on an air service proposal for air service to destinations in Mexico.
May I make the motion to continue item thirteen for twenty, for no more than twenty-five days?
Okay, we have a motion to continue this item for no more than twenty-five days. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And that's what the, and that's what the caveat that there is going to be due diligence done and that is going to be inspected, correct?
We have a motion, uh, as discussed in executive session, uh, to, to continue this for no more than twenty-five days. That's what the motion reads. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen.
One name.
Oh. No, it already passed, come back in twenty-five days. Yeah, but it's not coming up for action, Greg. Okay? It's not coming up for action. As a point of, okay, as a point of order. No, Miss Craig, please have a little respect and understa- okay? Understand that this is already taken care of. You will have the opportunity, you'll have more information, and you're welcome to come and sit down with management or anybody else, okay?
Can we move to fourteen?
This is continued to twenty-five days. Item fourteen, please.
Mayor, apparently, Commissioner Toriadi noted two seconds ago that during this time frame, apparently, due diligence will be made. Uh, and as, as you said, as was discussed in executive session, clearly, some action has been taken in executive session in our public opinion. And someone has been directed to do something in executive session, uh, it appears. Um, and if that action was taken, Mayor, this has to be taken in public.
No action was taken. No action was taken.
Can't be taken in executive session.
It's, it's, it's just, uh, uh, what was stated here, the motion, Commissioner Toriadi spoke out of executive session, but the, the, the motion made here was to continue this for no more than twenty-five days. It's gonna be brought, brought back in twenty-five days. Yeah, twenty-five days, we'll have a discussion.
Are you gonna bring in other carriers or just deal with one, one company?
Well, that's subject to if any other carriers, uh, apply, you know? The item, the item here, ladies and gentlemen, is, look, please, I have constraints to work under, okay? I have the exec- please, please. But wait a second. I have constraints that we have to work under, okay? Under executive session rules, what's discussed there is privileged because it's competitive and sensitive, okay? Those are the rules, I don't make up the rules, okay? I do not make up the rules. But listen to me, listen to me. It was discussed and it was agreed to continue this item for no more than twenty-five days. During those twenty-five days, okay? If anyone wants to submit, uh, a proposal, we've always been open to any suppo- proposal for years, okay? So-
This has one thing, will the same incentives be available to other airlines that you've offered to FlyFrontera?
That's executive.
Is that, is that deal open?
You see, that's, that's, that's up to them to contact our airport director and, and, and meet with them and see what we have available, what we don't have available.
That's the whole idea, that's good though.
It's open, it's open, it's open. Anybody's welcome to contact our airport director and sit down with them, what did the city can offer, what they offer, or whatever it is. But I cannot discuss what was discussed. Well, it's up to, you know, airline carrier wants to come over and, you know, talk to our executive director, okay? So, but based, based on the constraints that I have to work under, I ask you all to understand, please, that we do have a motion, uh, for, for, to bring, to extend this for no more than twenty-five days, at which time we'll bring it back. And if there's discussion needed, you're welcome to come back and discuss it. Right now, there's nothing to discuss, other than that we're moving it up for up to twenty-five days. And I don't mean no disrespect to anybody, but this is the constraints I have to work with, okay?
I think what they want to know is if we're gonna do an RFP and we're not, and that's why I voted nay.
You don't know that. Just move to fourteen.
Thank you. You know, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
We already voted nay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay. Do it, and you still, I mean, it's all sitting here, and you knew you were about to eat a deal with it. Nay.
What's that? I'm sorry.
She says she wants to know what's going on. Everyone's tired of the backdoor stuff. That's what's happening. Everyone's out there, they're tired of it. They're tired of it. We wanna hear what's going on.
Pastor, 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 pastor.
Yes.
Do you wanna open it up?
No, we shouldn't.
Do y'all wanna open it up?
Can't.
To me, to me, to me, I don't, I don't care. I'm working on, wait a second, wait a second. I'm working under the constraints, listen to me, listen to me. I'm working under the constraints of executive session. It's up to the commission. If they wanna open it up, I'll open it up right now.
Yeah!
Explain the rights of the executive session.
Explain the rights of the executive session.
We came here-
Open it up.
Executive session. You all open it up, open it up, make the motion.
Make the motion to reopen it up. I wa- I, I want y'all to see this, I want y'all to see this. Okay, they were talking, now they wanna talk about it? You wanna say we're talking about RFPs? Make the motion, Commissioner.
I make a motion to reopen the item for discussion.
Okay.
You have a second.
Second.
You have a second.
Hold on, hold on. I'm gonna, can I, can I have a quiet, please? Can I have a quiet? I'm gonna second to open it up.
It's already been seconded.
Yeah, but you need to realize, this isn't, we weren't trying to hide it from you. It's just we're under, we're gonna open it up for you, okay? I'm seconding her motion to open it up. Give me just, please give me just one second. Please, yes. We're gonna open it and discuss it, that's not the problem. We did, it's not that we didn't wanna open it. We are under our executive session rules, not you. Now, we're gonna open it up, that's fine. But you need to understand that when the motion was originally made, it was because we were under the rules of executive session. It's open now. It's open now, but don't try to, don't think, please, please do not think that we were trying to keep this from you. It's just under the rules, we, the information, please, the information was discussed in executive session and by law. We are required to keep it in executive session. We're gonna open it up for you, okay? But please understand that it was not made to keep it from you. It was because we were under, under oath and in executive, please.
And no action was taken. No action was taken in executive session, I wanna make that very clear.
It was just discussion.
And I'm telling you this right now, the dangers of this, Pastor, you gotta be out. You're gonna eat these words. Because I'm gonna tell you, you're running the risk of losing an airline.
Yep.
That's a risk you're on a take? Okay, wait a second, I am here as your servant. I, I, they, you know, I was under the constraint not to open it up. The commission decided otherwise, I said, to me, it doesn't make, make any difference. They decided to open it up, but I'm letting you know right now, it's under the peril of losing this airline. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's aye.
Can I say something just for me? Nothing to do with this. Today's my dad's eighty-fifth birthday.
Happy birthday.
But I have, I'm the last on the agenda, and I was wondering if y'all would just accept my report, it's there, so I can go ahead.
I, I may, can we move it up, his item, to table for the next meeting because it is a lengthy report?
Whatever y'all want.
Second.
Sorry.
Second. Sorry, you had to wait. Happy birthday to your dad.
Happy birthday. Okay, so, the discussion is, uh, who wants a new discussion?
Well, I wanna know, first of all, is this legal or not?
Okay. What you can't do, hang on, hang on, I'm gonna tell you. What you can't do-
Hey, I haven't been in jail like you, bro.
Please! All right, hang on. Trying to conduct this, we're, we're willing, as you saw, to, to open it up as you requested. You, you all have been told everything, there's nothing secret, there's nothing secret at all. We're just trying to protect the city's best interests. Now that we've gotten to open it up, now let's listen to the guidance by the counselor and respect his guidance, okay? That's all we can go by, as mayor and as commissioner.
Can I say one thing before you?
Sure, go ahead.
I wanna echo Commissioner Longoria's words, that no decisions were made nor can be made in executive, uh, session. What we did and what we've opened it up for is basically informational purposes for you all, okay? And my comment was, is there going to be a review? And there should be a review. I think that a gentleman got up here and explained the basic processes for evaluating businesses. And that's what we're requesting occur within the next twenty-five days, okay? I don't know that we need to get into the details because there are trade secrets and there are things that in order to protect deals that need to occur. But I think as a community, you need to know that we are trying to protect your interests, okay? And there has been a lot of distrust and a lot of animosity. And I think at the end of the day, simply saying that we are going to put those parameters or criteria in place and we're going to review this and bring it back again after those have been done, really should be enough. I mean, we really don't need to go into the details of the contract, because if we did, that may cost us the contract. We may be in a situation where we would not get what we want at the end of the day, if it's feasible. But until we have all the information, we really can't make a decision on this offer that we have right now. And that's kinda where we are. Now, I think personally, and I'm a lawyer, so my, my thought process may be different than a lot of other people. I think you probably have enough information now to understand that we do wanna review it and we wanna make sure that we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed. And, and that's where we are. If we give you a whole lot more information, we are possibly shooting ourselves in the foot. And we're possibly putting ourselves in a position where we could be open to litigation. And these people that we're dealing with have spent money. And, and, hold on a second, and we have to respect that because there is, there is a situation where it may be a good deal, we don't know. And until we have all the information, we can't make that decision. And we're saying we can't make that decision today, and we're asking to come back in twenty-five days after we've been provided all the criteria that we need, and let us review it again. And that's where we are. And I, I think really, that should be enough information at this point. And in twenty-five days, you can all come back and see what it is and, and see if we vote for or against it based on the information that's been provided. Getting into the minutia, well, that's really not gonna do us any good.
Okay, let it finish, please.
And we're saying we're not gonna, and we're saying we're not gonna vote on it right now because we need more information. That, that's the, in between, we can't vote on it because we need more information to evaluate it. We don't have enough information at this point, and until we get all the information, just like it was represented, are you going to get a return on investment? Is this something that we can, we can handle as a community? Is this something that we want to do and is there going to be a market for it? Those are all the things that have to be determined before we can do this. And that's why we're saying we can't vote today. If we voted today, we'd be making decisions without sufficient information. And I, I personally think that a regional air transport to Monterrey and Tampico could be very lucrative because there are people right now who are traveling to Houston to fly to Monterrey. And, no, it is true because I have clients that do that, and, well, the issue here-
Please let it finish.
The issue here-
Please let it finish.
The issue here is to have regional air transport, and is this something that would bring money into our community? And I can't tell you that answer because I don't have all the information. And that's, that's where we are. And the question is, is can we get that information? Is it going to be something that would convince us to vote for it? Right now, we have two people who are voting nay, okay? And there's, everybody else is saying that they wanna go forward. Now, give us more information, maybe we'll change our vote based on something that's out there.
Wait, 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 wait a second, wait, wait a second.
That's, that's all I have to say.
Before I open it up to discussion, let me dispense, because you wanted this information, with certain things, that way it doesn't get any, there's no need to prolong this. One of the issues was Carlos Quintanilla. Does he work, uh, for char- uh, public charters? No, does he not? He does not, okay? So he does not work, does he have any interest? No, he does not. So that's off the table. That was asked, that was a concern of yours, okay? One was a due diligence, okay? They did everything, public charters did everything that we asked them to do. We failed to do the due diligence. It was not them, it was us, okay? They went through the same test that Continental and American Eagle did, and they complied with that. We want a little more, which we're asking them for at this point in time, which they're willing to take back to their board and we're gonna take to B E D C. So, really, there's nothing to decide on, and there's no hidden secrets, and there's nobody trying to pass a fast one on you. We are doing the people's business and making sure the taxpayer is protected and that we, we're getting something for our money that, that, that's gonna help our community because any healthy community needs pa- that has an airport, needs passenger air service. And being on the border, we must have international air service. So this is an opportunity, I think that we all wanna support. We just wanna get all the facts, we wanna get all the assurances, and we're asking, uh, for a little more extra to satisfy you and everybody else. So if you wanna continue discussing it, you're welcome to, and I'll open it up in a minute, go ahead.
And I'll direct this, if you'll allow me, I'll direct this to Craig because he's the one that I spoke to. The action that we took in asking B E D C to take these twenty-one days to evaluate was, in essence, what you were asking for. You wanted accountability, you wanted answers, we'll get you the answers. We're giving B E D C a task to take twenty-one days to evaluate this, come back in writing and give us that evaluation, and then in turn, we'll turn it right over to you. But like I told you earlier, the act, the action that was taken in executive wasn't to hide anything from you. We are directing, in essence, through discussion that was partaken in executive session, to direct B E D C to take those twenty-one days to go and evaluate the company. That's it, so that we can give you the straight answer, the way you want it. We could've made it as a- Ms. Maggie, Ms. Maggie, in all honesty, what Mr. Quintanilla does with his money or with whoever, in reality, does this- but this body, whether, whether that company, uh, well, irregard- irregardless, if-
One at a time, one at a time, one at a time.
Ms. Maggie, if this-
Let him, Maggie, let him-
Most of y'all are, are supporting a convicted felon to run for office.
Please, please, let's let-
What's the difference?
Commissioner, 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 Commissioner Longoria has the floor. You see what happens? You see what happens when people can't understand and let somebody speak and let them finish speaking? You know, Maggie, you'll get your turn, everybody get their turn, now let the Commissioner finish speaking. Commissioner, I can say, let Commissioner-
Those of you, those of you here present that own businesses, sometimes, at ti- at times, the, the workload has gotten too great, maybe a lack of expertise and because of what you do, you subcontract. I, I've done it in my business, I subcontract. But within our parameters as a council, we cannot dictate to a vendor who he or she subcontracts to. That is out of our realm, okay? So basically-
But we can express our discontent.
Melissa, you stated that, but this is not pertinent to mine, okay? What, what I'm getting at is this, if this company does or does not subcontract to Mr. Quintanilla, it's really not, not our concern. We, we, we have a deal with that company, we choose to go into it. If it's subcontracts to him, that is within their contract, and if there's any repercussions to be, to come of it, it, they will suffer it. But in essence, the contract has nothing to do with Quintanilla. I mean, we're not trying to circumvent it, that's just, that's just the way the process is.
Wait a second, wait, let, let's maintain some order here. Let him finish.
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Gav, please allow me to recognize you before you can speak, and you will be allowed to speak, okay? But let's follow the decor, okay? Please, Commissioner Gav.
I would simply like to re- reiterate or echo what's already been said, which is there was concern, um, for several things, as the mayor and many of the other commissioners have said. And there were very blunt and, and direct questions asked, and that's why we are asking for more information, because we are trying to be careful. Not because we are trying to go behind us, behind a corner or anything like that. We're trying to be careful. And I can only assure you that there were very direct questions asked by everyone here on the council.
And I wanna reiterate, we asked directly, is, was he hired, is he getting any kind of compensation? We were assured he was not. His role was that he contacted them and said that Brownsville was poised for international flights and that he would like to see if they were interested. And they came down here to evaluate, they found interest, they got excited, and that's how it came. So if Mr. Quintanilla took it upon himself to promote us, who are we? Who are we to deny that if it's gonna help us?
But you said we are unable to control whether or not they hire him or not. Why even make that statement if that's the case?
I made that statement.
You made that statement too.
Oh, in, 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 in executive session, yes. And that's true, I mean, we can't tell your company who to hire, who not to hire, we can't do that. But the question was asked, is he being compensated in any way? And he said no. And they, he said also, in response to Commissioner Samora here, he reassured us there are strict, strict guidelines by FAA who they hire, okay? That has nothing to do with us, that has to do with the air, air charter company and FAA, okay? So, we've done what you asked us to do, and I think everyone here is putting in a good effort. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up, okay? Those of you who wanna speak, would you please stand in the line right there? Okay? Stand in line over there, so I can know how many are gonna speak, so I can limit you, uh, to so many minutes.
Mayor, may I have the floor real quick?
Yes. So how many people are gonna speak?
He's chair.
Okay, how many people? Two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? Ten, ten people so far? Oh no. Oh no, okay, how many, can you somebody count here? Eight, okay, eight people. Uh, y'all wanna give twenty minutes each, commissioners, or you wanna give ten minutes each? Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. Don't jump the gun, I'm asking the commissioners. Okay, the commission was approved a half hour each, how much y'all wanna give?
I would ask, I would ask that they be, that they be limited to no more than five minutes.
Okay.
All right, and, and also-
Eight people, that's forty minutes.
And also, if you would, if you would, and it'll be acceptable, that there be no personal attacks, just like it is during, during a public comment? Thank you.
Okay, okay, and I'm gonna ask the commission to refrain from responding and listen, make notes, and then respond. That's forty minutes, we're allowing, that's gonna be ten o'clock.
I have a question, because you just made the comment about response time. Are we limiting this to five minutes total per person? Or are you saying that this-
Per person.
Okay, no matter what questions are on the floor, it's five minutes, that's it.
Yeah, but I'm asking you to, to not respond, let every, each one speak, and then make your notes, and you respond at the end. Because otherwise, it's gonna be a lo- a, a long discussion.
I would recommend, and maybe I'm, you know, limiting free speech, but I would say that it would be five minutes total per person, and if there's any questions that you allow a minute at the end of their, you know, at minute four, they get a minute for response time if there's something.
Okay, whatever the wish, Commissioner, I can stay here till midnight, two o'clock at one. What is the wish of the commission?
I just said no more, you know, no more than five minutes per person.
That's it? And then at the end?
Because it could go a long time depending on how-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I might, I might suggest something. Since a lot of these folks may be discussing the same concerns, I mean, there certainly wouldn't be a problem with them among themselves picking two or three representatives to talk for a longer period of time if you wanted to, um, so we don't have-
I already asked them to pick out a speaker if they wanted to, but they all wanna speak. Okay, so it's gonna be five minutes per person, and the commission, I guess, uh, will respond by one minute, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Can I make just one real quick comment?
I can't limit the commission.
I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry.
You do all the time.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Come on.
I'm sorry, this is just a, please understand also that this is a courtesy that's being paid. This does not need to happen, it is an action item, there is no need or, you know, to allow for public comment, but it is being allowed to, to address your, your, your wishes and, and your concerns, so please take that into consideration.
I'm not gonna limit the commission per minute because everybody may wanna have to say so. We're gonna limit them five, five minutes. But I would rather you hold your questions, commissioners, till the end, and then we can respond, unless you all wanna stay here till four o'clock in the morning. I'm willing, I'm here, I'm here, no problem. Okay, Mr. Grove, state your full name for the record.
My name for the record is Michael Craig Grove. Um, I'm here representing myself as a taxpayer and a citizen of Brownsville. Um, I would first like to thank you guys for opening this up, we do know this was not required of you. And secondly, I would also like to thank you all for your service to the community, including Charlie. Um, because I know you give a great deal of your time, effort, and energy to an often thankless job. And I know I can be a severe critic, so I wanted to say that, and I do appreciate you guys, every single one of you. With that stated, I want to go with my prepared statement, I'm not gonna take the full five minutes. Um, I would like to say that today, I approached the commission to express my concerns regarding the proposed deal with FlyFrontera. After reviewing the available details regarding the deal, valid concerns were raised concerning the nature of the deal, perceived lack of transparency, and a lack of an official RFP or request for proposal from the city of Brownsville. Therefore, merits and potential benefits of this deal notwithstanding, I respectfully ask that the commission consider postponing the decision at this time. Now granted, I prepared this speech before you guys took your executive decision vote. Furthermore, I request that an official request for proposal, RFP, be generated by the city of Brownsville and those that are in the know on this, and be provided to national and regional carriers that could do this. I believe allowing more time to provide an RFP will provide more transparency and encourage healthy competition in the city of Brownsville and our transportation media. This can only benefit the citizens and the visitors of Brownsville and our surrounding area. What we see today and the reason you guys are taking this special action is because you're responding to the outcry from the community, and we appreciate that. We are not here to attack anyone, not Mr. Quintanilla or anyone else. Now, concerns do arise from Mr. Quintanilla's involvement. This is why we became motivated to speak to you guys. Someone who has a RICO fraud conviction should not be involved in dealings with the city of Brownsville at all, ever. It's not a DUI like Zeke Silva. This is RICO, conspiracy, federal charges. How can we possibly deal as a conduit or in any way with someone who has RICO fraud convictions?
He's not on the contract.
This is not, it's, this is not, this is not a personal contract. I mean, this is not a personal attack on him, this is plainly available data. I, you told me I could talk for five minutes.
Didn't you hear what I said? He, the city's not dealing with him.
He, this city is dealing with him.
No, the city's not dealing with him.
Mayor, is he, is he listening to what you promised us he would do?
The city-
Didn't he tell me I could speak for five minutes before I did?
But you're, you're making statements that are not true.
I am not making a statement that is inaccurate. Let's check one thing here, Mr. Mayor, and I was not going to go and address Mr. Quintanilla until you guys made it seem like that's a non-issue. It is not a non-issue. It is a concern, and it is why thirty people are here. So it is an issue. Let's talk about one thing that we know to be a fact. LaFrontera Airlines, this shell corporation that was set up a few months ago as a venue to approach our city for public charters, states on its address that it is based in the residence of Carlos Quintanilla. So wait, we're not dealing with him, but the, the administrative office is in his house. But we're not dealing with him, so let's move on from that.
Uh, just, just for the, just for the record, just for the record, it's a nine thousand square foot home. It's a building, it's a building, it's a building, and another fourteen thousand square foot home.
It has a tennis court too, guys.
It's a business.
I wonder who he defrauded to get the tennis court.
He lives at the top of the business, they're buildings, they're buildings.
I'll, I'll bet you've been there to visit, Charlie. Anyways, so I digress, since Charlie has disrespected me by talking over me when I was promised five minutes, which have not ended.
Our office building, don't, don't lie.
Charlie, you have truly proven your ability to disrespect anybody who steps in your way. So if you would not mind letting me finish. That was the impression I gave, okay?
You'll get, you'll get your five minutes, that's, that's not a-
I, I don't want to have a squabble with you guys, I came to speak, and then what I understood from the mayor respectfully, and I acknowledge all you guys respectfully, I've been nothing but respectful, and I'm not receiving reciprocal respect. So let's talk about this. I'm going to finish my statement, and then you can rebut that. The issue with me is not Carlos Quintanilla, he is highly disconcerting, highly. If you can go on Google and look up anybody- If you can go on Google and look up anybody, and the first thing that pops up is a Rico fraud conviction, and the administrative office for this business that we're supposed to be doing business with is in his home, that is highly disconcerting. I wouldn't let the guy clean my house. Okay, so I'm moving on. I will restate my situation, my purpose and desire for being here. I would like for you guys to generate an RFP. I would like for you guys to evaluate all proposals, not just that which came from one guy who has a Rico fraud conviction, regardless if he is merely a conduit. If he just handed you the piece of paper, I would have a concern with it. So, next, I am asking you also to give more fair consideration to Pan Am, who has now invested half a million dollars into Brownsville, and was told there are no incentives coming. And yet, he has invested half a million dollars, he does not have a Rico fraud conviction, he can deliver everything that Mr. Quintanilla, well, not Mr. Quintanilla, public charters can. That's what he says. Talk to him about it, not me. He told me he can deliver, so give him a chance to deliver.
He has a year and a half to deliver.
He has a year and a half?
Cargo operations for a year and a half. You know how much cargo he's brought? One box. He can't put planes-
Has he gotten two million dollars? I don't care if he's brought in no boxes. He didn't get any money. He spent half a million dollars on a building down here.
One piece of cargo besides a box.
But you're gonna give two million dollars to a non-company run by a convicted felon. That's a better idea.
Felon for office to handle our budget.
He had a DUI. How many DUIs have you had, Chuck? Bring it. Who's gonna sweep your next one under the rug, guy? If, if you didn't have the cops helping you out, you'd have three. Keep attacking me, Charlie, I can take it all day, guy. All day, I'll stand right here.
You don't have a problem with a burglary of a vehicle, right?
Ladies, what?
You don't have a burglary of a vehicle problem with him either, right?
Oh, okay, so when I was seventeen, guys, I busted a window on a car, and, and I got, I got, uh, a burglary of a vehicle when I was seventeen years old.
Thirty years ago, Mr. Quintanilla-
Seventeen years old. Am I asking the city for two million dollars? Anybody?
I'm gonna move.
Do I have a Rico fraud conviction? No. So he pulls my criminal record and tries to besmirch me? Have I talked about this? What did I do when I was seventeen years old? And please, someone tell me how it's relevant. Please, tell me. Anyone? Can someone bring up some relevance? Am I asking for two million dollars? I don't think so.
Okay, uh, Craig, your five, your five minutes are over.
Nope, because he was jumping on me.
Your five minutes-
I'm gonna finish my stuff. You give me thirty seconds to wrap, and I will.
Exceeded your five minutes.
You give me thirty seconds to wrap, and I will. Thirty seconds.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, here's what I'm asking. RFP, transparency, no more BS executive sessions, no more wasting our money on whatever Charlie Atkinson pushes over everybody. And let's, uh, let's go ahead and put this deal in front of other carriers, and then come back to us and pitch it to us, and ask us if we want it, because we don't want it. Goodbye, and thank you.
Before you start, before you start, this is a good example of why we did not want to open it up, okay? No, no, listen to me. First of all, and with all due respect to Craig, he's speaking, and he's well, he's not well informed. Okay? He's not well informed. At all. I'm gonna tell you. Let me address it, let me address it. And where, where is Larry Brown? Larry Brown? Where are you? Bring me that letter by Pan Am. Okay? I'm gonna refute the facts. It's not Pat O'Mah attacking him, but I'm gonna let you see what's actually accurate. Okay? First of all, it was made very clear that Mr. Carlos Quintanilla is not receiving any compensation. We can't control who they hire, but he's not receiving any compensation. It was made very clear that it was Mr. Quintanilla's initiative that brought this airline carrier who is well-respected. Okay? And has been checked out, we want more, we want to do more checking, okay? That wants to provide service. Now, this community needs international flights. Third of all, we have been working on bringing international flights for years, for years. And we have offered incentives, okay? We have offered incentives. We can't go up to an airline and tell you, we offer you two million dollars. That does, that's not the way it works. When Continental came in here, they told us what their break-even point was, depending on their cost. And then we negotiated a deal. So it's not us offering them, it's them wanting to come to our community and risk the investment, and we partner up with them. So we can't possibly tell all the airlines, we're gonna offer you two million dollars. That's not the way it works, okay? We have to find out what is their break-even point, and then we negotiate. Third of all, everybody's been given an opportunity for years to come to Brownsville and service the Mexican market. We've contacted Delta, we've given the opportunity to Continental, who does fly to, 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 to Mexico City, okay?
But out of Houston.
Out of Houston, okay? But to go out of Brownsville, okay? We've given them the opportunity. We went, I took Larry Brown myself to Mexico City, to meet with Mexicana, Aereo, Aereo Mexico, to see if we can get them to come here. I contacted JetBlue to see if they could come here. So this is not overnight deal. We've been working on this for years. And nobody's trying to hide nothing. This was brought, it came to us starting back in October. But they were directed to the airport director, and to Jibby, to start the process without interference from any of us. Okay? So, charter, uh, charter airlines here, uh, went to, to, to the airport, and they have an airport committee. And they went through that process, and they were vetted out, okay? They went through Jibby, and they were vetted out, okay? Without our interference, we're not doing nothing. The responsible people are doing it. So there's no secret, it wasn't the agenda with Jibby. The information provided to us is what's being provided to you. Other than, today we got the contract, what was finally worked out, okay? So there's no hidden agenda. There's, there's nobody trying to, uh, uh, ill-spent taxpayers' money. Pan American was given the opportunity to service Mexico, and they have not taken that opportunity. And the opportunity's still there, the door's still open. They need to come to us and tell us what they will, what, what they need from us, and if we can provide that through incentives. And they go through the process just like American Eagle, and just like Continental Airlines, and just like, uh, public charters here. Same thing. They have to go through the process just like them. So nobody's barring them, nobody's trying to pro- pro- prevent them from participating, okay? Let me tell you the letter, okay? Consideration of Passenger Flight Proposals from Pan American Airways. This is Pan American Airways' letter, okay? Request to Remove from the April fifth City Commission Meeting, and an additional three weeks, any incre- incre- uh, any request for incentives of ticket subsidies to provide passenger service to Mexico cities, and in specific, the request by Frontier Airlines. Well, this is the letter. Now, I'm talking about the letter, uh, where, where they say they cannot provide air service for three years. I have a letter, okay? That Pan American writes, and says they cannot provide passenger service for three years. Now, is that Brownsville trying to prevent them? And Craig's here attesting to that they can provide the service? When Pan American themselves say they cannot provide the service? They don't have the planes. They don't have the planes to do it.
Let me say something real quick, Commissioner. Just to respond, just to respond. You have, you have Pan American Airways at our airport, prime real estate, paying twenty cents a square foot. Twenty cents a square foot, where the going rate's eight bucks, eight to fifteen bucks a square foot. You ha- he's had, the city of Brownsville paid to re- to, to renovate the space that, that he's leasing right now. To this day, and the question was asked to Larry Brown, how much cargo has he brought in in a year and a half? One box. That's why, you know, when he comes to the table, and that's why I called him, I said, what are you doing? What he did, he tried to sabotage this thing by saying, he tried to hire the people. He can't deny it, because I got witnesses. He tried to hire the people that are trying to get this done. He, he tried to fire-
I said I would limit the commission.
He tried to hire, he tried to hire these people. Then he went and filed a claim with the state of Texas to take over the Flyfrontera name. I mean, this guy's a cutthroat businessman who's willing to throw out stuff. You know what you need to do? You need to, hey, you need to be held accountable for the stuff you're bringing to Brownsville. Do it. Work on your cargo before you wanna do passenger. That, that's my advice to you, alright?
Let me say something, Zeke.
Mayor, could I have my five minutes?
For Charlie, he's telling the truth, and there's nothing wrong with the truth. Okay, Pan American, listen, you're not being recognized. Pan American, by their own letter, said they could not provide the service. I, I don't care, I don't care, but we're, we're, we're risking to, we're, Zeke, we're risking to lose somebody that can't provide the service, because this gentleman is promoting something that's not true.
He says he can do.
And it's inciting you all to believe that he can provide air, air passenger service.
We just lost service to Monterey by the, by the- They're looking at what's going on around, nobody's gonna do business in Brownsville because of the way things went on.
They made it very, listen to me. They made it very clear. They may not deliver service from Brownsville to Mexico. They're so frustrated with Brownsville.
Would you mind saying what date that letter was? And it was in Mexico when we went down there, they asked me how long passenger service would be available, and at that time, it was three years, because there was no incentive, Mr. Mayor. It's three million dollars investment, and you didn't offer anything.
So you wanna hand out too, right?
But anyway, I don't, I don't wanna argue that. Let me, let, let me, let me talk.
Put your money where your mouth is. Bring us a proposal.
Let, I will, I will. But let me, let me go. First off, I appreciate your extending the time to twenty-one to twenty-five days. That does give us the ample time to present to you a proposal. But more than that, it's not about Pan American Airways. It's about fairness, and it's about transparency. Send it out to everybody, every air carrier in the United States. Ask them to come. Tell them how much you're going to give them for incentives, and have them bid. To tell me there's no incentives means I could not do it for three years, because I probably couldn't raise internally for my cargo operation three million dollars.
From the one box he brought?
Now, I won't get into you about that, Charlie, because it's proprietary, but where's Kebler? He was in St. Louis with us, along with several other people from the city. They know what we're bringing, okay? I will put the airplanes in the air when I choose, not you, or this city. But I will tell you this, I will be bringing six point three billion pounds of freight to here, and Eddie was there. Rico was port, was there. But it is proprietary, it is confidential between St. Louis and us. So, that's what I'm bringing, and to tell you the truth, I don't have to bring a single aircraft here, because this is so huge, and I don't have to leave it here. This is huge, friends, and there will be an announcement on it when it's ready, and when St. Louis allows us to announce it. But you've got city people that were there in that meeting, so I'm not gonna discuss that. What I want you to do is send it out for bids. I don't need to get it. This was not in my plans. I was asked to do this. My cargo plan does not include passenger service at all. The Council of Mexico asked me. The city of Brownsville asked us, will you consider passenger service? I said yes. And we traveled to Mexico City, we, I'm not to Mexico City, to Nueva Lon, and we had meetings there. And I came back at that time, and I asked Larry Brown, are there any incentives to Pan American Airways available? The answer was uncategorically no. Based upon those facts, we went out and we looked at Embraer Fives, five Embraers, from the same person that they're getting it from, Berry Aviation. I've got the faxes. They're legitimate. They have airplanes. They want to lease them, that's all they wanna do. Everything is done, nobody owns airplanes anymore. You go and fly out on Continental, it says run by Ameristar. Guess who has the certificate? Ameristar. It's called an ACMI lease, aircraft, crew, maintenance, insurance. You lease it wet or dry, with, without fuel. You don't have to own a single airplane. I've got two seven thirty-seven three hundred city in Los Angeles right now that could have been here-
Submit your proposal.
If, if we've done that. That's exactly what we'll do, but I'd like for you to go out to other people, not just me. Ask Delta, ask other people to come there.
We've asked Delta, we asked Continental, we asked, let me tell you, this is how we got Continental. We didn't have passenger service for many, many years for Brownsville, we didn't have it. And we went after airlines, and after airlines, till we got Continental to do it. This is the way it's done. I assure you, we're the laughingstock of Brownsville, okay, and the region. I assure you, I assure you, McCown doesn't do business this way. And that's why, that's why they eat our lunch. We have a bird in the hand. And because of all the misinformation out there, we're gonna end up with nothing. And you may say, no, you shake your head, but you know something?
No, sir, you'll end up with something-
For the city of Brownsville, the hotels, the tourism industry, downtown, the, the investors, the property owners that, 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 they wanna come over here because of the insecurity over there, they can't travel on roads, are gonna be impacted.
I absolutely agree with you, Mr. Mayor, but you will get, you will get someone interested if you broadcast this out.
Sir, bring, bring your bid.
I will be bringing it in, and I do appreciate your extending it for that, alright?
Please bring your bid. Thank you. Okay, next person.
Okay, some, some of this has changed. My name is Jim Barton, James L. Barton, sometimes known as Jim Barton. What, what we, we would like you to accomplish in the next twenty-five days? I wish we could go past the election, but you, that's fine, twenty-five days. Let's go beyond the scope of just reviewing the current deal, and analyzing it, as you say, dot all of the i's, cross all of the t's. Let's again, I know the mayor says that you've already done this for years and years and years. But let's make a, a consistent call to every airline in the US, and see what they, and see if you can bring them to a roundtable, and see what they can put on the table. Mention, you know, you don't have to offer incentives, but let's, let's say that you could save the taxpayers of Brownsville five hundred thousand dollars. Would it be worth it to make a little effort? What if you could save two million dollars? What if you could negotiate a deal with several cities coordinating, working together, and have no taxpayer money? See, put everything on the table. Why be locked into one deal? See, this is what concerns the citizens here. When they see you're locked into one deal with one company, it looks like calabasas to them. That's what it looks like. So, in legal terms, they call that what? The appearance of impropriety. We're not saying it is impropriety, but that's the way it looks. So let's get beyond that. Here in Brownsville, we have a very thin margin of error with taxpayer dollars and with public trust. We have a, a little bit of a track record in the area of public trust. So are you surprised that, uh, people are suspicious? That it looks like a, you're locked into one company, and you're not making a real effort to just open up and let all of the airlines in the United States participate? That's what it looks like. It's probably not that, but you know, there it is, the appearance of impropriety, and that's where we stand. So all I'm asking is, I was originally gonna say, why the rush? Well, you've taken a little bit of the wind out of my sails there. But let's turn it around, and instead of say, why the rush, let's say, let's not just pat ourselves on the back and say, we've done all we could. Let's intensify our efforts, approach every airline, and see if we can get a better deal for the citizens of Brownsville. Maybe you'll end up with Flyfron- Frontera. But maybe in getting other companies into negotiations, you can knock a couple hundred thousand or three hundred thousand off of that. Isn't that the way the negotiation works? Now, Mr. Atkinson talked about negotiation on Coffeyport Road. He got a couple families together, had a little problem there, and he negotiated it. Can't you do that with airlines too? Let's get a few of them together, let's get a better deal for, for Brownsville than this. And then we won't, then we won't have the suspicion, and then educate us, let us know what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Let me, let me ask you all this. How many like Continental Airlines here in Brownsville? How many like Continental Airlines that's here in Brownsville? Well, let me tell you, that thinking right there, Continental Airlines would have never been possible. That thinking right there. You know how much the subsidy was for Continental Airlines? Because we have an air, uh, air passenger carrier here, three point five million. That's what we had to do to bring passenger service to Brownsville, to restore it. It's an investment. It has had a major impact on our economy, and that's what this is. And I'm, I'm afraid, and I'm sad, that I think we're gonna lose this airline, because of, we can't understand how these things work. Ideally, what you're saying, contact every airlines, we've done- We've done it. There's no secrecy. There's no hidden agenda. I don't give nothing. None of these gentlemen gave anything. None of us. We're just trying to bring you economic development. Larry, I want you to come up here. Here's our airport director. And I want you to listen to him. And for you and for some, hopefully it's, 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 what he says, you will, you will take to heart. And for some, maybe it's not enough. But I assure you, we have been trying. Please, Larry, explain to the audience here what we have been doing to try and bring an international airline. And for how long? For twenty-five years?
Okay. First of all, the city of Brownsville, as you know, is an international city. And the fact that there are five airports within a close proximity to here, okay? Including Airport in Matamoros, Airport in Harlingen, Airport in McAllen, Airport in Reynosa, means that this business is very competitive, not only amongst airports, but amongst airlines for air service. What we do is we, in a professional manner, approach airlines by, first of all, attending conferences. Those conferences are called Jump Start Conference. There are also conferences on an international nature that we attend. And typically, the way these conferences go, you're given about fifteen minutes to sit down face to face with an airline, put your proposal on the table before that airline to try to suggest to them that Brownsville is a good place for them to come and do business. We typically will go to one of these conferences and meet with twenty, twenty-five different airlines, okay? The most recent, the city commission has a copy of a synopsis, bullet point synopsis that describes the most recent discussions we've had. Those include discussions with airlines such as Volaris, such airlines as Mexicana while it was still in operation, as well as the other airlines, Clich, for example, as a part of, what was originally a part of Mexicana, and the other airlines that currently serve, for example, other competing airports, okay? Terms of potential international service. What we then will typically do, once an airline decides it may be interested in following up, we then will typically sit down with them, describe the airport that we have here, the community we have here, and what the potential market is. That's not staff doing that just all by themselves. The city of Brownsville employs a, an air service consultant that is one of the best in the country, if I may say. Their name is Sabre, airline consultants. The air, airport operates based upon an airline service development strategy that was developed by Sabre. It was developed about six years ago, okay? And that airport development strategy is what led to Continental Airlines, for example, which had three round trips per day in two thousand two, to expand its operation to the Houston hub. So now it has between five and seven round trips per day. That increased the access to the Houston hub market. Second, that airline strategy also provided a justification, a market analysis, if you will, that was presented to American Eagle to demonstrate the fact that there is a market for people to fly to, the DFW Airport is a major, major hub, and be able to expand its operations from the major hub literally to anywhere in the world. The third part of that airline service strategy, as was pointed out, is a continuation of the efforts in order to try to obtain service into the various different Mexican markets that we know we have. When you consider the fact that a flight from here to Monterey is about forty-five minutes on a, typically on an RJ, there is a market for the service. And the market, due to the change in circumstances in Mexico right now, we know has increased. We know that because we talk to people. Not only that the airline consultant does the analysis, but also we talk to people. For example, there is an airline, it is a air taxi service called QDI, that has been operating back and forth between the airport, providing service with nine passenger, you know, small aircraft to in Monterey. People are using that service quite regularly. It's very busy. The number of aircraft that are at the airport in terms of GA type aircraft has increased about two hundred and thirty-eight percent within the past six months. People are using aircraft as opposed to having to drive, okay? Those are people who potentially will make an investment in this community, not just in terms of the day investment, but in terms of finding a place for themselves to live in the community. And when you consider such things as the fact that you can stand in a control tower at the Brownsville Airport and look to the east and you can see South Padilla Island, you count the floors on the condominium at the end of the causeway. You turn around and look south and you see downtown Matamoros, okay? And the simple factor matter is this is an international city. It has been an international city since nineteen twenty-nine, when Amelia Hart, Charles Lindbergh cut the, cut the ribbon dedicating the airport. It's an international airport. That's why it's called that. And so what we do is take those various different factors associated with this community and tell those to the airline. Provide them with the studies that demonstrate the fact that there is a market here for their service and then invite them, if they would like to, to come and give us a proposal. I will also tell you that as far as my staff and myself goes, we're open to anyone, any airline that wants to provide a proposal for service out of this community to do business here. We believe this is a good place to do airplane business and we intend to pursue everything we can do to make sure that continues to happen. You know, if it comes down to, if, if, if the city commission directs us to, you know, invite proposals, we'd be more than happy to do that. We'd be more than happy to consider those proposals. No problem. We're all about increasing the airline service and carrying out the strategy this, this community and this city has paid for, the development of.
Thank you, Larry. As you can tell, they've been working very diligently over a long period of time. We have an international airport, but we don't have international flights. And, you know, I don't know what more you could expect from us in trying to provide international service. If y'all don't want it, that's a different story. But I think it's a sad day for Brownsville, that if we don't make the effort to reestablish international flights. It's good for our community, it's economic development, and, you know, they've done what they can do.
I would just like to know one other thing, if I can, as was pointed out. Air cargo service is also extremely important to the future development of the city as well as, as well as the airport. The fact that you have a nexus of such things as the port of Brownsville, the international bridges, the airport and so forth, makes for an ideal situation to potentially develop additional cargo business now, not just air cargo, but shipping and so forth. And I can speak as a former director of planning this city. We have something that's unique here. We have the ability to make that work. We just have to find a way to work together to do it.
Thank you, Larry. You know, uh, the, thank you, thank you very much, J.D. You did a good job. Thank you, Barton. Uh, anybody else who wants to speak?
My name is Dag Barrera. And I'm an educator, not an aviator. I'm not a, an analyst on aviation. So I have questions that I'm sure that the people have, Mr. Mayor. Where there is rumors, there is some fire. That's what we're looking. Somebody mentioned that it's a shell corporation. Have you looked into that, Mr. Mayor, please, Pat? I understand that Mr. Quintanilla, I don't know the man, is a, an ex-con. Let's put it simply.
Dag, it's not, this is not an issue. Quintanilla has nothing to do with the city.
Ta bueno, okay.
All he did was bring the airline. Listen to, listen, everybody.
Alright.
I, I don't think it's getting through. All Mr. Quintanilla did was invite the airline to come here and look at us.
Okay.
That's all he did.
Maybe it's, that's, that's my part, I'm wrong there. Okay, so Mr. Quintanilla is not also in, is not a professional in aviation or finances or analysis? Okay, ta bueno.
He has nothing to do with it.
If there's a Pan American Airways, uh, company that wants to come in, get that company to come in, rather than something that is mysterious.
Okay.
Pero mira, another thing, Pat, Mr. Quintanilla, somewhere along the line is gonna be handling our money, taxpayers' money. No? I'm wrong there, okay? Okay, ta bueno? I'm wrong. I'm wrong. I'm just asking questions. Okay. Why, why is Frontera asking us for money ahead of the, the project? Or is, and if they're good and solid, yes, to the otro, and they're the most famous Frontera, so forth? Or yes? Get, get Mr., who, who runs the television station in Mexico? Como se llama? What's the name of that man? Escarraga. Get to give him some money para, to start the, the flight? Why ask us peons down here?
Pan Am's gonna ask you for the same money, Dag.
Okay.
Pan Am's gonna ask you for the same incentives.
Continental did it, American Eagle did it.
They're all gonna do it.
It's part of, it's part of bringing the air service that nobody wants to provide. If you want international flights, you gotta invest because you make your money at the other end, Dag. You make your money the other end. With hotel occupancy, a sales tax receipts, creating jobs, bringing investments, that's how you make your money. You recoup your money that you invested to bring an airline. Now, you're under the assumption that not one ticket will be sold in two years.
I hope not.
Okay? Yeah, because that's where the two million dollars comes from. It's a million dollars per year. But that's if no ticket is sold, ladies and gentlemen. We guarantee twenty-one tickets. If they sell, and we reconcile monthly, and, and if they sell twenty tickets, we're only responsible for one. That's it. We're not responsible for a million dollars worth of tickets and we have a six month, six month option to get out of the contract. In six months, we review, we don't like it, we can get out. So that's an option that's on there.
That's good, that's good.
You know, this is nothing secret, it's just the way, you know, you want, y'all want us to get permission from you to do everything? That's what you're saying? Okay, okay. And then, and then we're not gonna get nothing done? Because I, I assure you, y'all won't even agree amongst yourselves as to what you want to see and what you don't want to see. Okay? That, that, that's what this is, that's what it's all about. That's what it's all about. No, what did I say? That's what it's all about because it's been months in the negotiation and taking place. Then it's brought, then it's brought at the right time before you and you're informed as to what's being done, okay? That's where you get the input, from you. But we don't, we didn't even know, okay, the final outcome of the negotiations. It takes time to get there. It takes time to find out what the break even point is. It takes time what it's gonna cost, uh, to marketing. It takes all that time. Nobody's, you know, if you want us to come to you before we can get started in the deal, nobody's gonna wanna do business with us. Nobody. Nobody. But that's what y'all want?
Okay, Pat, now you have given us a lot of information that we didn't know, Pat. Now you know that, quiz those guys, ask them for the money, ask them for, uh, uh, letters, ask them for, como se llama, probationary period, and you're doing that.
He said it right there. What do you think we've been doing?
Si, pues no sé. I don't know, Pat.
Y'all go by rumors? You come to conclusions?
Yeah.
Okay, but I always said, listen, listen to me, listen to me. I always said, all of you are welcome. We have the city manager here. We have the airport director there. We have people on the airport committee. We have people at Jipic. Why did nobody take the time to go ask a Jipic what's going on? Go ask the airport? And it's open meetings. Go to the airport and ask them what's going on or come to the city manager and say, I want some information. I hear these rumors.
Andale, okay.
Okay, so, you know, no, y'all go by the rumors and you make it factual. You make it that it's true. But if you come and talk to the city manager, the city attorney, the finance director, come and talk to me, come and talk to the commissioners, you'll find out.
That we're wrong. We're wrong sometimes.
But you do the damage. You do the damage.
No, no, we're just...
No, we're risking of losing an airline. We're risking losing an airline.
I, I hope, really, Pat and commissioners, honorable commissioners, I hope that I'm wrong because I have so many questions. No quiero que me, my pockets que me saquen dinero de la bolsa? You know? I don't want money taken out of my pocket.
We wanna put money in your pocket.
Eh?
We wanna put money in your pocket.
I hope so.
You know how? By creating jobs, people pay taxes, people buy homes, it costs, it costs less money to, to tax people so we can provide public service, build streets, you know, do the things that you want us to do because our tax rate's too high, you know, we, you know, this helps us keep our tax rate down, okay?
Okay, Pat.
Now, I'm very passionate, as y'all very know, about any issue the city of Brownsville. Don't take it wrong. Please don't take it wrong. But I'm here to serve you. If y'all don't want an airline, okay, I will carry you that out.
Oh, we want one.
And I'm sure the commissioner is willing to do the same thing. But I don't think, I don't think that's what you want. I think you do want an airline.
Yes, we do.
Okay? So, but you gotta trust your commission.
But a good one, a good one.
You gotta trust your commission until you're proven wrong. Take the time to come and talk to your city manager before you believe what somebody's telling you and you believe to be true. Or before you believe something that you read, you think it's true. Or before you believe something that you hear and you think you heard some when it's not that way. Get the facts. That's what we should all do.
They're, they're here because they're believing the cheese man. They don't know the facts. That's the problem.
Thank you, guys. Okay, Dag, thank you very much.
Dag, on the past, the past four or five months, I've been working on my rental houses. I cannot come every, every, every...
Why'd you say get facts? I said get cheese man.
Okay, next person, Zeke.
My name is Sequeel Silva. I own a trucking company. It's transportation, whether I haul, uh, anything that's, uh, dry or either you, we haul, uh, people, it's still transportation, okay? I've been doing this since right out of high school with Lisway Delco. I did a lot of charters and then I understood that a charter for it to land cost the company ten thousand dollars. Well, Lisway Delco is no longer here. It left and became Pesky and it's all in Los Indios, Texas, okay? So it moved away from us. We have a foreign trade zone that is not being utilized to its fullest. We have an airport, as we all know, that's international, which is great. We have the port of Brownsville, we have the island, we have Matamoros and we have Brownsville and we have surrounding cities. I'm not in, in, uh, in disagreement of growth, don't ever get me mistaken. I understand that we need international, uh, airlines, airways, excuse me. Mr. Gonzalez over here, a few months ago, did address the commission and says that industrial, industry, industrial jobs is what we need here in Brownsville because industrial jobs create more paying jobs, okay? I believe you addressed the city. We are after a company which no guarantees that there's gonna be that much coming in. I understand that there was a study done. Studies are studies, okay? But there's no guarantees. When I started my business in two thousand seven, I had ten thousand dollars. In three and a half years, I've turned those ten thousand dollars to three point five million in gross sales, okay? That is not an easy task. But no one gave me a penny, okay? I earned it. My marketing was done by me, okay? No one gave me a penny. Nobody gave me a parade. I believe when Pan Am came in, he was applauded. He was applauded by all the commissioners and they were told that they were gonna guarantee us in the first few months, twenty jobs. And whether the first year or a year and a half was gonna give us a hundred jobs, okay? Apparently, none of that has happened. Está diciendo que dé tiempo. Todavía están pagando alquiler, okay? La competencia es lo que estamos pidiendo ahora. Si no permitimos que otras empresas ofrezcan, okay, y no tenemos una aerolínea existente aquí. No tenemos una aerolínea existente, okay? Si empezamos a insultar a la gente que ya está aquí para dejar, para traer a otra persona, ¿Qué va a pasar con la otra persona que viene o la otra empresa que trata de venir? ¿Vamos a insultarlas porque no presentaron lo que esperábamos de ellos? Ahora, estamos dando dinero a las empresas. Entiendo que usted dice que es la forma en que estamos supuestamente haciendo negocios. Pero ¿cuáles son las empresas que vamos después? ¿Solo vamos después de una aerolínea? Okay, no voy a mencionar a la persona detrás, okay? Porque aparentemente esta persona no es relevante para esta conversación. Pero si una aerolínea con ese tipo de dinero debería poder estar en sus propios pies. Y si quieren Brownsville, ¿por qué no nos dan un incentivo en lugar de darnosles un incentivo? Tenemos la capacidad aquí. Tenemos la isla. Tenemos Matamoros. Tenemos Brownsville. Tenemos la ciudad de Royal City. Tenemos muchos lugares que podrían venir, okay? Tenemos mucho... Tenemos el zoológico, Glaters Porter Zoo. Tenemos mucho para ofrecer. Ellos necesitan nosotros tanto como nosotros necesitamos ellos, okay? Tiene que ser dado de ambos modos. Tienes que dar algo para obtener algo. Y a veces, no darlo todo al mismo tiempo es la mejor forma de hacer cosas. Y estoy solo preguntando... Si Pan Am quiere una oportunidad, que ya dijiste que lo darás a ellos y me aplauden, chicos, que todos van a darles una oportunidad. Pero también es muy esencial que le demos a otras aerolíneas, okay? No todos están tan informados como deberíamos, okay? Tal vez sea porque las cosas se han hecho de cierta manera. Y ay, no establecimos las reglas, tú lo dijiste, ¿verdad? No establecimos las reglas. Las reglas ya estaban establecidas. Pero si hay tanta preocupación, entonces tal vez deberíamos pensar en ello y eso es lo que todos van a hacer. Pero, ¿25 días suficientes? Eso es lo que estoy preguntando. ¿Es 25 días eso? I mean, si no les damos 60 días por supuesto, ¿es uno de los acuerdos que la Flota Frontera nos dio? O sea, ustedes toman una decisión dentro de ahora o nos vamos de aquí. Y van a ir a McAllen. No estaba... Alguien dijo algo. No estoy tratando de apuntar y señalar. Pero dijo que también señaló a McAllen. Y la razón por la que McAllen no quería tomar esta oportunidad fue porque el cartel, la Ciudad del Mexicano, estaba pidiendo a la aerolínea que le dieran nombres de cada persona que estaba en ese avión. Okay, ¿vamos a tener ese tipo de problema también?
Un minuto, sir. Zeke, primero, tu aventura es una aventura privada.
¿Dices qué?
Tu aventura, el negocio de tránsito, es una aventura privada. Esta es una aventura pública con financiación privada.
El dinero sigue siendo dinero, señor.
Tenemos un aeropuerto. Tenemos un aeropuerto, eso es público. Necesitamos sostener ese aeropuerto. Y cuanto más negocios generamos, ya sea cargos, pasajes, vuelos, eso nos ayuda a operar en el blanco.
Okay.
Y no tengo que usar los contribuyentes para subsidiar, okay? Así que el privado y el público se unen para tomar riesgos para establecer vuelos internacionales. Si fuéramos a seguir tu fórmula, y soy un arco recto. I mean, te diré la forma en que es, aunque no esté...
No espero nada menos.
Okay. Para usar tu fórmula, nunca tendríamos... Nunca habríamos obtenido a las aerolíneas internacionales aquí. Nunca habríamos obtenido a American Eagle aquí. No tendríamos un aeropuerto, mi amigo.
¿En serio?
No tendríamos un aeropuerto.
¿Cómo sabes?
Porque durante años no teníamos a American Airlines y teníamos que proporcionar un subsidio de tres punto cinco millones.
El director de la aeropuerto solo dijo que ustedes tienen uno de los mejores, okay, el mejor en el mundo o en el país. Okay, él dice que tiene el mejor. ¿Por qué tenemos que contratar o por qué Quintanilla tiene que venir aquí y traer una aerolínea cuando ya tenemos a alguien que está en el salario que no pudo solicitar sus propias aerolíneas? O nuestras aerolíneas. O una aerolínea.
Están desinformados.
No, no estoy desinformado. Dijiste eso justo ahora. Él dice que tiene el mejor consultor.
No tiene los aviones, Zeke.
¿Qué quieres decir, que no tiene los aviones?
No tiene los aviones. Por su propia admisión, su propia empresa. No tienen los aviones, no pueden proporcionar el servicio.
No, no, espera un minuto. No, 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 no estoy hablando de Pan Am. Estoy hablando de nosotros. Él dice que contratamos los mejores consultores para salir allí y solicitar negocios. ¿Por qué Mr. Quintanilla tiene que traer a alguien?
Porque no fuimos capaces de entregar. Estábamos fallando.
Así que entonces necesitamos reemplazar a las personas que no eran capaces de entregar.
La oportunidad. Es como, conoces a alguien que no conocemos. Te invitamos. Óvalos. Te invitamos. I mean, todos podríamos usar todo el help. ¿Por qué lo estás manteniendo contra alguien por traer a alguien?
No dije que lo mantengo contra él. Todo lo que estoy diciendo es que... Si tenemos... Tenemos aerolíneas diferentes, señor.
Pero, pero, volviendo a lo que dijiste, sabes, tu es una aventura privada. No puedes compararlo con la ciudad. Si estás pensando que nunca habríamos obtenido a Continental Airlines...
Inversiones son inversiones, señor. Inversiones son inversiones. elegí invertir aquí en Brownsville. Elegí crear empleos, okay?
El aeropuerto no podía pagar para comprar un avión y mantener el servicio...
¿Cuánto costaría un avión? ¿Siete millones? ¿Cinco millones?
No estamos en el negocio de vuelos a la vuelo.
¿Un dos propeladores usan Cessna o qué?
No estamos en ese negocio. Queremos que lleguen a aquí. No vamos a entrar en el negocio de vuelos.
¿Entonces qué le ofrecemos?
Realmente rápido, Carlos Quintanilla está aquí. Si quieres... Mucha gente quiere saber...
¿Estoy listo todavía, señor?
Déjalo, déjalo hablar.
Yo prefiero que te sentes.
¿Disrepetí a alguien aquí?
Espera, 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 espera. Okay, te daremos la oportunidad. El comisionado abre la discusión. Tenemos discusión.
Así que recibimos la interrupción también.
Espera.
¿Vamos a poder interrumpirlo?
No, no, no.
¿No has terminado?
Sí, sí. Sí, sí, sí. Okay, Dino, usted es el siguiente. Usted es el siguiente. Esto es por qué quiero abrirlo. Ustedes lo quieren, así que tenemos que abrirlo. Es solo... El dueño de los compañeros charteres aquí. Esta es una buena impresión. Esta es una buena... Esta es una buena impresión. Okay, deténgase, deténgase. Carlos, Carlos, deténgase, deténgase. Deja que él hable. Deja que hable. Deja que hable. Sí, sientate, Craig. Craig, sientate. Sientate. Necesitamos cierto civilito aquí. Necesitamos cierto civilito aquí. Sabes, yo no quería abrir esto debido a esto. Ahora, abrimos, por favor, sean civiles, okay? Por favor, sean civiles, okay? Okay, permítanlo y denle al Sr. Dino la courtesy de dejar que hable. El único que puede interrumpir es el presidente, okay? Y reconoceré a aquellos que necesitan hablar. Vaya.
Gracias, señor. Dino Chavez es el nombre.
Sí, Sr. Chavez.
Solo para ser claro aquí, señor. No tengo un perro en la lucha. No podría preocuparme más por si vas con Pan Am o si vas con XYZ, ABC. Realmente no me importa. Lo que me importa son nuestros dólares de impuestos perdidos. Eso es lo que me importa, número uno. Así que el señor que estaba aquí con Pan Am hablando de que no le dio la oportunidad y tú dijiste que lo hizo, etc., etc. Sabes, no sé si lo hizo o no. Pero, quiero decir, ese es su lucha, okay? El tipo que está aquí con Quintanilla que supuestamente está trabajando a través de su corazón porque no está con la compañía, etc. No me importa, eso es para él luchar por su negocio. Me importa nuestros dólares de impuestos, punto, punto. Así que déjenme preguntarte a la vez. ¿Quién aprobó el acuerdo Titan? ¿Lo hiciste tú? ¿Lo hiciste tú? ¿Y tú? ¿Tú? ¿Alguien aquí? ¿Alguien lo hizo? Okay, así que todos son inocentes, all right. ¿Quién aprobó el acuerdo de la Aeronave Taylor? ¿Lo hiciste tú? ¿Y tú? ¿Tú?
No estaba aquí.
¿Alguien aquí? Lo hiciste. Okay, eres culpable. Eres culpable de no hacer tu trabajo de casa. Eso... No, 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 déjame, déjame. No, no, no. No sabía que tenías... Que tenías parte de este acuerdo. Pero básicamente, no hiciste tu trabajo de casa. Y eso es todo lo que estamos pidiendo que hagas.
Pero hacer el trabajo de casa no garantiza...
Déjame terminar, déjame terminar, okay? No garantiza nada. No, no hace nada. Un tiempo atrás, tuviste...
Dino, ¿puedo hacer algo rápido? Cuando tomé esa decisión, fue presentada por Larry Brown, okay? Y Larry Brown ha respondido por ella. Y porque fue una aventura fallada, no fue reprimido. Solo se le dijo, sabes, no deseamos buscar estos tipos de aventuras en el futuro. Pero como oficial electo, nos advierte nuestro personal. Este es nuestro trabajo. Esto es lo que hacemos. Esto es lo que venimos a hacer como servicio público para ti. Pero tenemos a gente en nuestro personal, nuestros directores, que toman estas decisiones. Y estamos informados. Y hacemos las preguntas y tomamos el tiempo fuera de nuestros horarios, fuera de nuestras familias, para poder ir y ser informados y venir y tomar la mejor decisión que podemos. Ahora, podría deviar un poco, pero déjenme hacer esta declaración. Una vez más, vuelvo a lo que dije al principio. Si tenemos una audiencia pública sobre un tema, por supuesto, levantense todo el camino y nos escucharán.
Gracias.
Tenemos... Este es un tema de acción. Aunque lo quieras o no lo quieras, ustedes nos elegieron. Ustedes nos elegieron a la posición que solemos mantener. Y cuando se trata de un tema de acción en la agenda, tomamos esa decisión con tu confianza. Y con suerte, si Dios lo quiere, tomamos la decisión correcta a tu favor. Estamos divirtiendo el derecho de usted venir y hablar. Pero una vez más, quiero decir, seguimos yendo yendo, yendo yendo con estas discusiones. Esto no necesita pasar. Ustedes nos confiaron. Ustedes votaron en el cargo. Tal vez me votaran, tal vez algunos de nosotros. Eso es tu prerrogativa, esa es tu decisión como el organismo electoral, como la gente que nos puso en el cargo. Pero mientras ustedes han puesto en cargo cuando tenemos un tema de acción en la agenda, ¿es ese el derecho que nos han dado para tomar esa decisión, correcta o incorrecta? Audiencia pública, por favor, levanten. Tema de acción, ese es el derecho que nos han dado. Por favor, confíennos en tomar las decisiones correctas. No todos van a ser correctos. No todos van a ser correctos. Por favor, tu madre estaba aquí con nosotros y tomó decisiones también en eso y falló.
Sabes, hay muchos... Hay muchos éxitos. Y como en cualquier aventura, siempre hay un riesgo. No hay nada garantizado. En este particular recurso, fue bastante razonado. Queremos hacer más. Y vamos a hacer más. Pero eso no garantiza éxito. Pero estamos haciendolo con buena fe, basado en toda la información que tenemos. Y todo lo que puedo decir es que sé si es la Aeronave Taylor o si es Titan o si es este acuerdo o si es Continental Airlines o si es lo que sea. Sabes, esta es nuestra comunidad. Y creo que todos queremos triunfar. Pero sabes algo. Parece que estamos dispuestos a fallar. Estamos dispuestos a engañarnos. Porque la mayoría de lo que he oído aquí es mal información que podría fácilmente haber sido trastornado por contactar... Como siempre he dicho...
O nosotros.
Contactar al gerente de la ciudad. Contactar al director de la aeropuerto. Contactar a mí. Contactar a los comisioneros. Señalas fueron hechas. Atacos están siendo hechos. Somos los que son ruidosos. Porque no tomamos el tiempo para ser correctamente informados y atacamos. Y engañamos a nosotros mismos.
¿Puedo decir...? Lo siento.
Teníamos una cuna en la mano durante años. Durante veinte años que conozco, hemos estado tratando de conseguir un vuelo internacional. Y tenemos esta cuna en la mano y aún así ustedes encuentran algo不对. No tiene sentido para mí.
¿Puedo decir algo?
¿Cuándo tendremos otra cuna en la mano? No sé.
¿Puedo decir algo personalmente? Personalmente, a partir de la información que he recibido de esto, lo que he leído de esta empresa, personalmente, mi opinión, creo que esta es una gran empresa.
Tú también.
Lo creo. Creo que lo que podrían hacer para esta comunidad sería genial. Acabo de conocer al señor. Está sentado allí. ¿Sabes qué? Mi opinión, por supuesto, okay? Es una buena empresa. Está saliendo de aquí mañana. No va a volver.
Es una empresa sólida.
No va a volver. Y perdimos a él.
Puedes ir al internet y verlos. Si tuvieras tomado el tiempo antes de que vinieras aquí.
Como dije...
Te harías mejor informado. Y son fáciles. Son fáciles de encontrar en el internet.
Si puedo terminar, por favor.
Por favor.
Rick, nada contra ti personalmente en absoluto. No creo que haya conocido a ti o nada así. Nada personalmente contra ti. Creo que todos solo queremos transparencia.
Hay transparencia.
No, 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 no hay. No, no hay.
¿Dónde hemos fallado? Cuéntame. Cuéntame dónde hemos fallado.
Hemos pedido información...
I mean, ¿cuándo...? ¿Cuándo viniste aquí para obtener información?
¿No teníamos un diálogo con no solo yo, sino que varios de nosotros con usted en Facebook la otra noche? Y no, la información no pudiste daros. No pudiste daros.
Necesitas venir a nuestro personal, al director de la aeropuerto. No soy el director de la aeropuerto. No soy el gerente micro.
Vamos de nuevo. Sabes, podrías haber ido a la reunión de BDC, que está abierta, y no fuiste. Podrías haber ido a la reunión de GBIC, que está abierta, y no fuiste. Podrías haber ido a la reunión de la Asistencia de la Aeropuerto de Brownsville, y no fuiste. You could've gone to the Brownsville Airport Advisory Meeting, you didn't go. How many chances do you need to get the facts straight?
Can you, can you provide us with the report today?
Wait a second, wait a second, Dino. And everything I said on Facebook is true.
Okay. If it's true, then your, your disagreement to provide us with the information is quite clear.
And look at my Facebook. I invited you to come to the meeting. I invited you to go seek management or get your information. You have failed, sir.
I'm, I'm here at the meeting, Pat. Just like I told you I was gonna be at the meeting.
You come here and complain and say there's no transparency? You have to take personal responsibility for yourself. And I'm not trying to attack you, Dino, but I'm trying.
I understand.
I'm trying to make sure you understand. You're attacking, and you're saying that we're, we're not being transparent, when you have to take personal responsibility. You wanna know about the subject matter? We cannot read your mind. You need to seek us out, go to the airport director, go to the city manager, go to BDC, go to GBIC, go wherever you need to go to get that information. Go to the website. You would've gotten a lot of information from the website.
Pat, I went to our mayor to ask for that information. I, I don't know who else I can go, I mean, you're, you're our mayor. You're, you're supposed to have that information, aren't you? I mean, you're here voting on the matter. Aren't you supposed to have that data?
And I'm getting the data to make well-informed decisions. But okay, I'm to respond to you.
Okay.
Wait a second, listen, listen to, listen to what you're saying. I'm supposed to give him information.
No, not just me.
No, no, no. I'm his personal errand boy. Because now you want information that's different from him on a different matter. I'm your personal errand boy. Is that what, is that what I am to you? Because, look, I'm not your personal errand boy. I'm here to represent the best interests of our community, as we all are here. Okay? But you have to take personal responsibility. You want information, the door's open. Come and get it. We try to get as much information, and we do our homework, at least I try to do, to make a sound decision in the best interest of our community. But sir, you're failing yourself.
Let, let, let's assume you are making the best decision for our community.
Not anymore, it's gone.
Let, let's assume that you are. Period. Let's assume that you are. Um, you, you had a very eloquent and very informed gentleman here a little while ago. Uh, Larry?
Brown?
Brown. Mr. Brown.
Young man, where are you? You're sitting up here.
He, he is, uh, I mean, he knows more about airports than I'll ever, ever, ever know. And, and I respect that.
Sit down with him.
I respect, I respect that. But, Mr. Brown, you, you, you made a mention, and, and you, you, you talked about all of the things that you've attempted to do, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and man, I, I appreciate that. And I, I really appreciate each one of you taking up your time and, and serving public, et cetera. But how many other companies were offered two million dollars?
First of all, I think it's important to recognize there is no pot of money of two million dollars that sits around waiting for proposals. That doesn't exist. The way this works, we invite airlines to look at what our market is. The airline will make a proposal. We will then take that, and bear in mind, proposals can vary according to the type of equipment, the type of route, the amount of costs associated with fuel, and on and on and on. So we can't say that there is a two million dollar pot of funds available right now for any particular airline. What happens is the airline looks at the market. It determines whether or not it can serve that market. It then prepares a statement as to what it would take for us to be able to participate with that airline. We then take that, and we look at what we can do. If the airline is just looking for something like, you know, a waiver on landing fees, that's not a big deal. And it's not a big amount of money. When it becomes more complicated, we then have to go through the process and deal with such things as the potential for GBIC, the potential for city, and other communities as well to participate, since they're a part of the market. Which is what the city has been in the process of doing with this proposal. And that is, we already have started such things as discussions with South Padre Island. In fact, South Padre Island was represented here earlier. South Padre Island, Port Isabel, and all the entities that are around here that would benefit from this service. So everyone can participate in making this happen. But it's not a done deal yet, okay? There is not that pot of money, if you will, that exists yet. The, the proposals by airlines are based upon what they can provide to meet the market. And so the cost associated can vary substantially. So there is no one thing. I will also tell you that the, the format that was used for this proposal was basically a standardized format that American Airlines actually developed. And that was what the, the company submitting the proposal used as a format. They looked at such things as how much it costs to fly the plane over a given period of time, what they would expect the market to be in terms of the number of people that buy revenue-paying tickets on that airline. They compare that with such things as their total cost per segment mile. Then they look at how much is it going to cost for us to do this service and to put our planes there and put our planes at risk? And then, is the community willing to share that risk in some fashion so that the community can benefit? As was proposed by Dr. Malki and so forth to the city commission. You can have copies of this proposal. An analysis was done associated with the value of people coming to Brownsville and our market area, visiting here, spending their money here. What does that do for the community? It doesn't just create revenue for the airport. It's investment into this community that creates new permanent jobs. They spend money here at restaurants. You know, the restaurant provides the food, people pay for the food. That money goes into the economy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Those are simple examples. But that is what it takes in order for the community to grow. The, the airport provides a service to people who wanna come here and who want to leave from here. And that's what we do, and that's how we go about preparing that proposal, if you will. There is no two million dollar pot of money. There is simply a proposal that has to be analyzed, determine what it would take to make it work, then pursue the funding for it. And the money can vary widely in terms of how much it would take to do it. Did I answer the question?
Has Dino ever contacted you to try to get informed about the airport?
I've never had the pleasure of meeting the gentleman before.
Has anybody here, Craig Grove, or any of them bothered to contact you?
Not unless I missed a phone call.
Let me ask you something real quick.
Steve, Steve, we're gonna have to say something. You wanna make a?
Let me ask you something real quick.
Oh, you've contacted?
In, in your twenty years as an airport director.
Thirty, okay, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years at airport. In your humble opinion, do you think we're real close to getting a good company in?
Getting the company to come in?
This, 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 uh, public charter, were we very close to getting this?
Yes.
Now, Larry. The risk is there, we're gonna lose it. Now.
You may wanna give an opportunity to choose people to address.
I'm not finished.
Stay with it, stay with it. Okay. Go ahead.
I'm not finished. I, I, I think I still had some time.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
You gotta get a line, Carlos.
So, um, Larry, I, I appreciate your professionalism and everything, so, what, what I'm gonna say here, I don't mean to demean you whatsoever. But the answer I got was, no, I haven't offered two million dollars to anybody else because we don't have a pot of money.
We don't do that.
So, if we don't have a pot of money, how can we offer that guarantee to another airline with a invisible pot of money that we don't have according to our airport director?
Can I make a response?
Sure.
I don't think that he's saying that we don't have money available. I think he's saying that it becomes a specific proposal that's presented. And in this, in this situation, the amount would've been two million dollars is what they're saying they would need for break even. Some other company may have a lower or greater amount, depending on their evaluation of their needs and what it would take for flights within this community. Now, this, this is the situation that we have right now, which is because of past failures like Titan and some of these other things that we've seen, we have put in place criteria. And we're asking that those criteria be used to evaluate. And simply doing background checks, et cetera, is not enough. There needs to be a business analysis on that. And once that's done, we'll have the information that we can use to evaluate the proposal. And that is essentially, when you first came up here, what you said you wanted to see happen.
Yes.
And before all of this got started, we informed you that's what we were going to do. And no, in this case, you know, they're asking for this amount of money in order to make this an operational, this work operationally for them. Another company may have had another amount. But this is the company we have, and they're probably the first viable company that would actually offer services in many years. And the mayor is correct that we have been trying to get international service for years. We don't have international service.
They're not lining up.
Hold on a second. We have basically charter flights coming in from Monterrey, Mexico City, and these types of services are being provided on a smaller scale with smaller airplanes. But as far as large-scale or larger-scale passenger service, we don't have that. And one of the things that we're not getting are fees that are generated from that as well. And that would assist our airport as well. These are some of the differences between a charter and an airline. And we're trying to get an airline in because that's gonna benefit our community. And we're gonna be able to move larger amounts of people into and out of this area, and it will have a trickle-down effect. Whether it's this company or another company, I don't know. And until we get all the information, we can't vote on it. And that's why we all decided to wait twenty-five days.
Okay? Just, just two questions. Two questions as a follow-up. Um, you, you mentioned Commissioner Troyani that, um, different companies might have a break even. You're exactly right. In finance, there are different break even points, depending on how good we do business. But without evaluating other companies' proposals, and, and I, and I know you're saying that they're, Charlie, you said, uh, that there, there's not any other ones. But how do we know?
Cause they go to conventions every year.
Yeah, but.
You go to the airline conventions and you go bid for them, and nobody comes down.
But you're not, you, you haven't bid anything.
No, they go, offer their services. Like Brownsville goes to these conventions and asks for them to come down, and they don't come down for the last fifteen, twenty years.
But the gentleman with Pan Am just said, hey, I wasn't offered this deal.
Yes, he was. He's been on there for a year and a half trying to get it, and can't get any planes to come down here.
So he's lying.
Doesn't have it.
He's lying.
That's why he left after he's done.
Let's just say he's reevaluating it.
Okay. One, one last question. Uh, the smartest finance guy here? Anybody?
Pete Gonzalez right there.
Hey, I remember Pete. How you doing? Pete, what's the ROI on this, on this project? Yeah, the projected ROI? No idea? Could it be a, a negative? I mean, is it possible? I mean, there, there's, you gotta have some kind of probability that, uh, maybe it's not fair to be asking you, but everybody pointed to you.
Can, can we let somebody else talk?
We'll answer your question.
Okay.
I think our airport is ready to answer that. Uh, but you wanna answer that?
I would simply refer to, you know, such things as Dr. Malki's study and so forth the commission has had an opportunity to look at. If you look at a return on investment, which is what the gentleman is talking about, return on investment for a person coming from DFW into the community. Let's assume that that's worth a dollar, okay? That that investment in the community is worth a dollar a person. The, the amount of investment for a person coming from Mexico into this community is worth about six dollars. It's about six times the value associated with a person coming from DFW to the community. I don't know if that helps you, but it gives you an idea.
Yes, 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 it does. It does. And there, there's obviously, there's a projection for the number of passengers that there's gonna be, et cetera. So from that projection, you get, well, we're, we're counting on six dollars in hotel revenue, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Plus, we're spending X amount of dollars. So you do the math, and you figure out, hey, our return on investment is blah. You guys need some homework, man. I mean, you guys.
And that's, and the whole point is we're saying we're waiting to hear what the numbers are.
Well, he didn't have the answer, so. Well, he just said that it was six dollars, but, but compared to the amount that we're investing, what is the ROI? And the simple, the simple reason I ask this, Pat, is that we sell bonds to raise revenue, okay? There's an interest rate in the bonds that we sell. That's the cost of money to the city. So if we're not generating at least what the costs of the bonds are, we're losing money. And it shows just a simple question. And, and if you don't have the answer, that's, that's fine, we'll. Thank you. Thank you.
Please, thank you, Mr. Charles.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Saldivar. I'm a resident here in Brownsville. First off, this is kinda off-topic, but thank you all for supporting the HB bill for the pet theft because it is more than value in dollars. It's a matter of they are stealing dogs, holding them for ransom, and so it, it's more than just a value thing. And they're also using them for bait dogs, which is a very cruel thing. So, thank you for passing that. Now, with regards to the issue at hand, I think a lot of the issues that the, uh, citizens have, which I did, is lack of information. And right now, this evening, I've learned a lot of information, like where to go to get the information, uh, which I was not aware of. Whether it's just because I'm new to Brownsville, or I just don't know how things happen in the city and how you guys, how it starts to the finish, to gets to your desk, and how you guys, um, uh, think about it, discuss it, and so forth. So I think, Pat, that the, the majority of the, the, the issue, the angst with people, is that they don't know. And they come here to learn, and you tell them, go seek it out. Well, they're here seeking out that information. And when you talk down to them, telling them that they just don't know, you're absolutely right. But you don't have to talk down to them in order to get that across to them. It's, it's our jobs as citizens to educate ourselves, and it's your job to give us the information. I was not aware that I could go sit at an advisory committee for the airport until you said it right now. Now I know if I have a question, who I can call, and that I don't have to come to these meetings and listen to all the rhetoric and the arguments and all the stuff that I really don't wanna hear. I wanna hear information. I wanna know that you guys did your homework. I wanna know the pros and cons. And Mr. Troyani is correct in when he stated earlier that we don't need the details. We need to know that you guys are doing your homework, that you're checking the pros and cons, and what the ROI is to the community, and how it will invest, you know, bring more jobs, bring more other companies, what have you. But there is a process, and you need to inform us about it. And if you had just stated, even in the paper, Brownsville's considering, you know, a proposal from this company to do, you know, passenger cargo out of, between Mexico and here, then people would've started coming to the meetings. But I barely heard about this because I read about it because of Mr. Quintanilla's own statement in the newspaper. He wrote a huge editorial or statement, and it was all him promoting it. But yet, you're telling me that he has nothing to do with it, but yet, he's promoting it. And now you're telling me we lost the bid because he's sitting here and he's offended. But he has nothing to do with it. So there's some contradictions here that I don't understand. And I think that's what people get upset about.
Well, he's gonna respond to that. I can't, I can't speak for him, so.
Right.
I can't, I can't speak for him.
Now, nobody wants to lose business. We want the, the community to grow.
I can't speak for him, I, I allow him to speak for himself. But let me point out, uh, the agenda for the meeting is publicized in the Herald.
Right.
It's put on TV.
Right.
It's put on the website.
Right.
It's posted here on the, uh, downstairs.
Right, but it gives some very ambiguous information. It's just very vague as to, you know, and so when people want to ask more questions, we think this is the place to come and ask them, and then we're told, well, you didn't do this, and you didn't go to that, and you didn't go to your meeting, and you should've gone here, and you should've asked there.
No, no, you're welcome to come here.
And I'm, so that's why I, myself, in here.
You're misinterpreting. You're welcome to come here and ask all the questions you want when it's open to public hearing.
That's my purpose for being here, not to argue or fight, but to find out information.
You're misunderstanding. That's what public hearings is all about. Now.
Okay.
If you're concerned as a citizen, you always have the option to contact.
I did. I emailed you and my district commissioner with respect to this issue and asked, and let you know that I had some serious reservations because of information that I had read and heard. And I didn't get a response back, which is fine. I know you guys are busy, and it was kinda short notice. But still, I do use the channels that are available to try to find out information. And that's why I came here.
Thank you. I respond to all of mine, okay? And I answer my calls, okay? But what I'm saying is, uh, you have the commission to contact, you have the mayor to contact, you have all the staff here to contact. They're, they're available to you. I mean, it's, it's, that's no secret. It's been, it's been here, and.
And, and I understand that.
This is your government.
And, and that's why I'm here.
This is your city.
Oh, I understand that. You work for us, and then, believe me, you don't have to reiterate that twenty times to me. I understand that. I understand there's a process. I understand there's process for everything that you all do, and that there are also rules, and that we must abide by them. But the community wanted, had some, you know, had misinformation, as you put it. Well, that's why we came, was to ask, you know, what's going on.
And the number for the city secretary.
And you directed me to another avenue where I can get that information, so that I can come better informed. And I appreciate that.
The number for the city secretary is five four eight six thousand. For anybody who wants to call, just ask for the city secretary, and she'll be glad to explain anything to you.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
It's called personal responsibility. If you wanna see a dentist, you look him up on the phone, and you call him. You set up an appointment, and you go over what you want done, and you decide.
Oh, you don't wanna hear what he has to say?
Not at all. Thank you for listening.
That, that goes to show that they don't want to be informed.
Well, you know.
But, uh, Your Honor, if I could approach you and you can read something, I think that would be very important uh, to understand the magnitude of the effort that has been done by public charters. I think that it's unfortunate that they have opted to leave the room, but I think that there's a lot of people watching on cable and television as to the reality of the situation. Uh, I am an activist. I have a long history of community involvement. I have a long history of being supportive of the right to speak and the right to question when something is wrong. Um, I am not perfect. I've been massacred in the logs for something that happened many, many years ago. My life has changed. It's been positive. It's been productive. It's been effective. I speak on behalf of children. I defend immigrants who are, whose civil rights are violated. I have been instrumental in litigating against cities that have been horrific against our community by implementing unconstitutional laws. I have led a major national campaign to defend children addicted to cheese heroin. When they were dying, I was not afraid to go on television and declare war on drug dealers. And so I'm not here to talk about me and what I've done and what my life has been about, but I'm here to talk about something that is going to be good for Brownsville. And I'd like to give you a little history of how this happened, and it's very simple. I approached the mayor, and I approached Mr. Camarillo. I've, I've spoken to Mr. Longoria. I've spoken to Mr. Atkinson, and I've spoken to many people about the need for a regional airport. I fly in, and I'm probably a very extensive frequent flyer, uh, to the point that when I get to the airport, um, they already know me because I've been coming here for two years. I, I didn't just come here yesterday or the day before. I've been coming here for two years. I spent on airline tickets. I've stayed, stayed in your hotels. I've shopped at your malls. I've eaten at your restaurants. I've rented cars. I've stayed in South Padre Island. I bought helicopters for my children. I've been very, a very, um, strong consumer in Brownsville. I'm also a taxpayer indirectly for everything that I consume. But I think that if you talk about how this happened, it happened very simple. I, you know, there was an opportunity. You know, there's no flights to, to Tampico, there's no flights to Monterrey. My ex-wife lives in Tampico, or lived in Tampico. And every time I had to drive, uh, to go visit her family, I had to drive from Dallas to Brownsville, Brownsville to Tampico. And whenever I had to fly, and I had to fly with three people, and I would have to make a reservation from Dallas to Tampico, it would cost about seven hundred dollars. So when you multiply seven hundred times three, it's twenty-one hundred. And contrary to popular belief, I'm not a millionaire, and I'm not wealthy. But I know what it costs to get to Tampico. If you were to do, your, if, if anyone was to go on Travelocity or on Expedia or anywhere else and try to book a reservation from Brownsville to, uh, Tampico, you would probably get a fair five hundred and seventy-nine dollars with fourteen days advance. If you were to do it from one day to the other, it would be about seven hundred dollars to get from Brownsville to Tampico. But you wouldn't go directly from Brownsville to Tampico. You'd have to go Brownsville, Houston, Houston, Tampico, or Brownsville, Dallas, Dallas, Mexico City, Mexico, Mexico City, Tampico. That's unfortunate for the citizens of Brownsville. That's unfortunate for people who wanna invest in this community, people who want to purchase homes in this community, people who want to shop in this community. They're not gonna do it. So they basically go elsewhere. And, and if you go throughout the entire valley, there's not one direct flight from the valley into, into Monterrey or Mexico City. Have we done our homework? And I speak "we" because I've been assisting Mr. Gallagher, who's a friend of mine. I've known him for five years. It's not like I've known him for a couple of days. And I would like to talk to you about my relationship with him because it's been questioned.[1709.42] I think it was even asked. Mr. Gallagher, uh, I approached him about developing a direct flight from Dallas to Mexico City. Cause Dallas had the same problem that Brownsville had. Even though it had a million Hispanics and most of them Mexican, there was no direct flight from Dallas, Texas to Mexico City. American Airlines wasn't doing it. Mexicana wasn't doing it. Nobody was doing it. So I said, hey, this is an opportunity. I went to Ryanair about trying to charter a plane to get transportation from Dallas to Mexico City. It was too expensive. So I went to Mr. Jim Gallagher and I said, Jim, I've read about you. I've been, they've been told, they told me to talk to you. We need to get a direct flight from Dallas to Mexico City. He went, we met with the airport directors, like Mr. Larry Brown, and we presented an opportunity to create a direct flight from Dallas to Mexico City. Mr. Gallagher, within a short period of time, was able to get a permit from FAA that would authorize him through his company to fly directly from Dallas to Mexico City. We then went to the airport board and we said, we would like to get some incentives because obviously this gentleman's gonna come in here and he's gonna put a 737-200 and he's gonna fly to Mexico City. I think you should give him some incentives. Well, he got the permit. A week later, Mexicana and American Airlines joint, joint ventured and all of a sudden, Dallas had direct flight from Dallas to Mexico City. Had we had the money, the Mexicana or American Airlines, I would be the owner of an airline flying from Dallas to Mexico City. But instead I decided to commit my life to defending children. Now, I'd like to bring you, I would like to read, to show you something that's very similar to what happened in Dallas. And I ask you, your honor, to read.
Read the glasses. The print's so small.
It's so small. Would you let me read it?
Attach copies of applications and AIP payment. They will issue the Mexican AOC next week. Once I have it, it will be able to present the application for the permit and the approval of the policy. Regards, Rosa Maria. It's directed to Jim.
So what does that mean? That means this gentleman in three weeks has been able to get a permit for direct flights from Brownsville to Monterey and Tampico. In three weeks, he's been able to do what other companies have not been willing or able to do. So is there a commitment to Brownsville? There's absolutely commitment. Is there investment into Brownsville? Absolutely, there's an investment. There's not just an investment of application, but there's an investment of jets, there's an investment of training, there's an investment of media, there's an investment of webpages, there's an investment of receiving, uh, resumes from people, there's an investment in talking to hos, to hotels and businesses. Today, I can give you a card of Pablo Gonzalez. He's a retired, uh, worker. He said, you know what, when your flight starts, I'll buy some tickets. I could show you the, uh, the card to the Marriott Residence Inn. That's where I'm staying. If anyone's asking if they wanna look for me, I'm staying there. And ask the lady who's in charge of the, who's the general manager, what it means not to have an airline, what it means to have empty rooms. Ask Mr. Longoria's father at the taxi stand, is your uncle? Ask him at the, at the stand at, at, uh, Brownsville Airport, how many passengers are coming in and how much service they're providing and what opportunities they're getting. And so what will this flight do for Brownsville? It's going to increase traffic. You'll have 800 people per week. You'll have 40,000 per year. There's, Mr. Brown, how many passengers fly in that? Fly right now? 90,000 on American?
Our payments per year are 90,000.
This flight, this project would fly 50% of what American and Continental's flying. And like some people say, this is a miserable, puny, small, insignificant airline called public charter. But it'll be transporting 40,000 people. And if you look at 40,000 people and you look at the amount of money that they're gonna be spending in this city on food, on clothing, on theaters, on renting cars or taking taxis or going to, uh, Las, Las Brazas or going to Cheddar's or going to Camperos or going anywhere else and spending money, that's a return on investment. 40,000 people, how much do they pay per airline, per fee? Ask Mr. Brown. They pay $4.50.
Right, that's correct.
$4.50 every time they step on your airport. That means that every time they get on a plane and every time they land, it's gonna be $9. You take 40,000 times 9, that's $360,000. That does not include the fuel. That does not include the FICA, the workman's comp and all the, uh, the employment and taxes that are paid to employees. Ask Mr. Brown or ask Mr., uh, Mr. Gallagher, how many resumes have been received within a period of three weeks? Over 200 resumes of people looking for jobs. Unfortunately, 200 people will not be hired, but there's a demand for jobs in this economy. Ask Mr. Brown how many letters he has received from hotels and businesses who are crying out for services into Mexico so that people can come in and spend some money. That's return on investment. That's what we talk about. And so yes, I am what I am. But when I came and I brought Jim Gallagher here because despite the fact what people say and despite what they talk about me, I think I am as much Brownsville as anyone else. Cause I spent the last two years here spending a lot of money, bringing my children, going to Padre Island, spending, uh, Thanksgiving and spending Christmas and spending time. And many people have seen me with my children and let me tell you one thing, I'm not a deadbeat father. And so when I brought Jim Gallagher, I didn't bring Jim Gallagher on a speculation. I brought Jim Gallagher on, on, as being a promoter for, for Brownsville, saying Brownsville's a good city. It has great potential. It has unlimited possibilities. It has South Padre Island. It has Matamoros. It has Harlingen. It has all these cities and all these people. Why does it not have regional transportation to Monterey or, or, uh, Tampico? Why do, do you not have direct flights to San Luis Potosí? Or why don't you have direct flights to To卢卡 or Queretaro or Guanajuato or other parts of Mexico when you have a significant population base that's close to, you know, 2 million people? It's illogical. It's unconscionable and it's unacceptable for a city like Brownsville not to have direct flights into Mexico. And you have the opportunity today to make a decision to make sure that this gentleman over there, who's made a commitment to come here, and he's a gentleman from Cleveland and Pennsylvania, he's not a Mexican, he's not Hispanic, he's an Anglo-American that's probably scared as much as anyone else to go into Mexico. But yet he was convinced to go into Mexico and provide services and bring a jet and make a commitment to the city and to refuse him or to basically deny him would be a tragedy for the citizens of Brownsville and it would be a tragedy for the, for the city of Brownsville. And what it will do is send a message that when people wanna invest in this city, when people want to bring their resources and their planes and their jets and their money and their time and their experience, that the city of Brownsville, because of political people and because 35 people come in and go on blogs, if you go on, on Acción America and you see me, you'll see me marching in front of 100,000 people. You'll see me marching in front of thousands and thousands of people and that's on video. I didn't spend my time trying to pack this room to convince and threaten anybody. I spent my time helping my friend, Jim Gallagher, bring an airline to this city and to, to make sure that this city grows and progresses because one day I wanna be part of this city. And if I didn't have my children in school, in Walnut Hill and at Cabell Elementary, I would be here because I think Brown Hill, Brownsville has great potential. And whether or not I have a felony conviction or whether or not I have this or that, the bottom line is that I have committed my life to do positive things. And if there's one person that's gonna judge me, then that's God and Jesus Christ and I'm at peace with him. I hope you make the decision to bring this guy in and, and, and do your due diligence. Check him out. You'll find that at the end, he has reservation systems, he has jet planes, he's got certification, he's got FAA authorizations, he's got permits in Mexico, he's got bonding, he has everything that's necessary to bring a direct flight to Mexico. And you have the opportunity to welcome here, him to Brownsville instead of chasing him and scaring him and like Mr. Longoria say, scaring him away from not coming back. If there's any questions that anyone may want to have of me, I'm gonna give you my number. It's 215-524-1011. If anyone would like to ask any questions of me, please call me. If they wanna know where I live, it's 421 South Dwight. And when they ask about my home as an office, because it's been about a blog, look, Google the map. It's an 8,000 square foot home. There's a 4,000 square foot, uh, office complex and it's on two acres. And we have offices, wifi, telephone, staff people working there, and that is how we defend our community in Dallas. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Mr. Quintanilla, before you leave.
Any questions?
Yeah, uh, what's the website for public charters so people who wanna get more information on public charters? What's the website?
It's publiccharters.com. Uh, it's charterairtransport.com. Um, you could Google them, um, you could, you could call Department of Transportation, FAA and look at their registry, look at their information. They're, you know, the travel industry is very regulated. It's not like you're under the radar. If you wanted to find out about public charters or charter air transport or Jim Gallagher, Department of Transportation would have them. Federal Aviation Authority would have them. They have webpages. They're not hiding. Do your due diligence. But if you do your due diligence, do it based on due diligence. Don't do it based on politics. Don't do it based on candidates. Don't do it based on, you know, this for that. Do it based on sound economic financial data. Base it on what he's worth and what he's gonna bring to this table. Don't do it on politics. If you do it on politics, shame on you.
Thank you. Anybody has any questions of Mr. Quintanilla? I mean, everybody's talking about him.
Yes, sir. I have talked to Quintanilla.
Dag, do you have any questions of Mr.? Pastor, you have any questions?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say a little bit of information would have avoided all.
You know what, your honor?
Whose fault is that?
We've been putting this information out.
Like this lady said, she came here to get the information and they felt like they were being crushed aside.
But when did they come? Pastor, they hadn't come till tonight. You know why? Because somebody was stirring them up with lies, okay?
Mr. Quintanilla, real quick.
Take personal responsibility, Pastor.
No, I, I'm saying we got that information.
Yeah, but yeah, at the expense, at the expense of almost destroying a project.
A little information early on. 10 minutes of information would have saved us an hour.
The information's always been available, my friend.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Quintanilla, real quick, real quick. And this is something that I was trying to work on and he came to the city. I gave a copy of a proposal to Rose about feeding kids. He wants to feed 5,000 kids in Brownsville this summer through a program out of Dallas. This is what, what inspired me to wanna work with Mr. Quintanilla and work with the city commission. Talk a little about what you were doing and I hope this, tonight doesn't scare you away from community support.
No, it doesn't. It, it, no, no.
Wait a second, wait a second.
But you know what?
Before you speak, during the relief effort, he sent me a trailer of goods for Mexico.
That's right.
Okay? He got on radio in Dallas and promoted a relief effort.
That's right.
Okay? So I don't know Mr. Quintanilla, uh, other than acquaintance, okay? But he did step up to the plate without even us asking him and he's willing to feed 5,000 kids and all this other stuff. You know, people have a personal issue with somebody, they should take it up with that person. No, listen, listen, listen to me. Your enemies are your enemies. They're not my enemies.
They're not mine either.
No, but what I'm saying is, it's, no, no, it seems, it seems like there was a personal agenda against Mr. Quintanilla. They should take it up with him. He has nothing to do with, he has nothing to do with the city. He has nothing to do with the city.
Well, your honor, if I, if I can address that, I did have conversations with, I think, Linda Castro de, de Muig, uh, from, I had, I, I, and I'd be willing to share with you my extensive conversations with her. I had extensive, extensive conversations with her on, on Facebook and I'd be willing to share that to the public. And my conversation with her was not antagonistic. It was, was not aggressive. It was very diplomatic, very cordial. I even invited her to go next week because we're meeting with the governor of Nuevo León to basically promote this project and she agreed to go. So it's not like we haven't been outgoing and trying to incorporate everybody. I would, I would hope she would.
We're not here for her to defend herself.
Then have her come back.
We're not asking, hey, he interrupted me.
There's nothing to defend.
He's interrupting.
What are you jumping in for? There's nothing to defend.
Why are we talking about his, oh, oh, actually defending him?
I'm not.
All the good things that he's done.
Because it's a fact.
Is everybody gonna give, we have an opportunity to follow the charitable things they have done?
Well, I have, I've been attacked, your honor.
He's been, he's been talked about on the blogs. It's not fair to this gentleman.
It's not fair to anybody. We're here to open up side of the era.
They had, they had the opportunity. They had the opportunity.
You're trying to lift him up, sir.
Well, no, no one, no one has to lift me up. I lift myself up. I, your honor, your honor.
I'm fair to everybody.
Your honor, you don't have to lift me up. I can lift myself up.
Stay here, ask him questions or do whatever they want. It's easy to blast people. It's easy to blast people, but he's here, he's willing to face him. They decided to walk out. He is here, sir. And I advise him not to speak right now.
If he has any questions, your honor, if he has any questions regarding FlyFrontera, Jim Gallagher's there, he can answer them and I'll answer whatever question he has.
You have questions of the gentleman?
Ask me the questions.
Mr. Quintanilla, you have questions?
Mr. Quintanilla, um, how confident are you of the numbers that you're speaking about?
Very confident. Whilst I wouldn't be here.
Out of 101 to 100% confidence, how confident are you that the numbers that you're speaking about, the volume of people, et cetera, is gonna happen?
Very simple. If you look at the SABR, you know, you, you understand SABR, right?
Are you 75% confident?
But I, you're asking me to give you an answer. Are you familiar with SABR?
No.
Okay, SABR is a reservation system that the airlines use. They basically track, you know, the kind of travel that goes from one city to one destination. So SABR basically has the number of people traveling from one city to another and they project 72% travel, okay? That's basically 72% travel from Monterey to Dallas, Monterey to Houston, the big city. So if you look at that and you extrapolate that and you say, okay, if these people are going from Dallas to Houston and from Monterey to Houston, Houston to Brownsville, what does that mean? That they're traveling, that they're using your services, that they're basically, that there's a need. If you look at the population data and then you look at the, 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 the populations of Matamoros and Harlingen and Brownsville and you look at all of that and you look at the number of homes that, and businesses that are owned by people Monterey, South Padre Island, if you look at the letter that was included in the packet to the city council members, it basically says, and I'm sure Melissa Semora can testify that she was a, a, a spokesman for Padre Island as to the significant investment of Mexican ownership into South Padre Island, it's quite substantial. So. I would, I would ask her to answer that question as to how much investment there is for Monterey in South Padre Island. How are they giving them?
That was the question I asked you.
But, but that's a question of how do I get this data? Based on ownership of South Padre Island? Based on SABR? Based on demographic?
All I asked you was, how confident are you?
Absolutely confident.
100%?
I'm, I'm here.
Why do we have to pay you a dime or guarantee you a dime? If you're 100% positive, oh, what's gonna happen?
You're not paying me a dime.
We're guaranteeing it to you.
But you're not paying me a dime.
We're guaranteeing you $2 million?
No.
A million dollars?
That's not true.
Why don't you just say, look, you don't have to guarantee anything. We're 100% positive it's gonna happen.
Would you like me to explain how the guarantee works?
Yes, please.
Okay. I wanna explain how the guarantee works. If there's 30 flights, if there's 30 passengers, right? If there's 21 passengers, basically that's the guarantee. If, if there's only 17 passengers, then the city has a responsibility of four tickets. Four tickets times 130.
That's per flight?
Per flight, okay.
How many flights?
Okay, there's actually, if you look at how many flights, there's 13 flights per week, multiply that times two. Take 26 times 130, how much is that?
26 times 130, that's the guarantee.
That's the guarantee. Take that number, multiply it by 52, how much is that?
Sir?
How much is that?
I, I, I'm not even getting.
Well, I'll tell you how much it is. If you, if you take, if you take 26 times 52, it's about $100,000, right? So how much would it take to basically wipe out that many dollars? And what, and then what happens if you have 28 people who are flying, and the guarantee is 21? What happens to those seven seats that's the difference on that flight?
There's a lot of ifs.
No, but what happens? I'm, I'm, I'm just using.
There's a lot of ifs.
But there's no, but, but let me tell you, what happens if those tickets are the price?
That's disarming, sir.
Why make taxpayers guarantee you anything?
Okay, okay.
I've given you my answer, but I think I've explained it.
I got, Steve, one more. I think we got Steve. Zeke, do you have any questions of this gentleman?
No. No matter what I ask him, he can interrupt. I'm not finna take conversation.
Ask a question, ask you a question.
What do I ask him? You said, okay, what is your involvement with Flyfrontera?
My involvement is my friendship with him.
That's it?
That's my involvement.
So why is it he's speaking?
He can come speak.
He already spoke, he's already spoke to the, uh, he's already spoke to them.
I think they gave you an opportunity to revert, to actually defend yourself over all the, the people that you offended on the blog, or the cheese man, or whatever you said.
Not getting personal.
No, I'm not getting personal.
You're asking me a question about Flyfrontera. Ask me a question about that, or I'm gonna interrupt you.
You don't have nothing to do with it. Then why are you here?
What is the question?
Why are you here?
Why am I here?
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you why I'm here. Because I'm, I'm making sure that this guy is not gonna be, come up here and have people like you ask him questions, and be very aggressive.
Who's a militant, him or you?
He can defend himself.
He's not a militant.
Ask him a question.
Okay, no, it's a, Zeke, he's welcome to go. And be friends with anybody. Okay, Steve, Steve's next.
Well, the plus seven people is that if there's a balance, if there's 28 people, that goes back as a credit to the city. So basically, if they've been paying 30, if it's 21 people, the city pays nothing. And so there's never ever $2 million in a tax. Doesn't exist.
Thank you, sir.
It goes back.
Thank you.
So you gotta fill it.
We're gonna fill it.
Okay, uh, Steve, you're, you're just as well. What you got, Steve?
Uh, apparently, you guys gave us the, uh, the details of the management and how to back them from the company. But, um, to, to. Uh, I listened tonight and sustained the man, he comes from Canada, goes through Houston, Nebraska. We're pushing for it to pass through Matamoros, Ciudad Victoria, and San Luis Potosí. So, so we're pushing that on Tamalipas. Hopefully, we'll get an answer in the next 12 months, 18 months. As marketing. You'll never see it Highway 69, but maybe you'll see it as Ruta 63. So let me start out real quick here as airline experience. And second, I do go to the BDC board meetings. I don't go every month, of course. JBic meetings, I sometimes go. I do go to the Port of Brownsville meetings. I also make public comments. I do the best I can to bring traffic. We need traffic. We've been traffic depletion since 1989. And we still have the same numbers. So that worries me. That was one of the reasons why I'm here. That's one of the reasons why I'm also talking to you right now. Because it worries me. History worries me, you know? Of course, you weren't here on the tightened decisions and other things that happened in our history. But I've seen 20 years of no growth. You know? That I am tired of. You know, no growth? Well, guess what? I will be a prophecy. I will give you a prophecy. If there's nothing done, we'll be like this for another 20 years. Or 40. Or 80. Or 100. Just look at 100 years ago. Where were we? 100 years ago, 1920, or, okay, correct me, my math, 1911. Wasn't that before Hotel Jardín was built? Wasn't that before the airport was created? Cause I think it was 1970, must have been. Obviously, I'm not talking about 1929, of course. Historically, we know that. But we did get an airline. A big one. In an infancy. And then it grew. And then the city commissioners voted no. And then things happen like history. I'm just bringing up some notes here. I'm trying to summarize what I've seen in the last few years. Like I said, I, I do participate in a lot of meetings. And, you know, it's a very historical decision you guys are about to take. Very historic. You know, sometimes people come in and comment and talk, and we could be here another three hours. You know, and I don't want to take three hours of your time. And I mean, I'm very happy that you have been able to table it, if that's the correct, correct terminology. Uh, I do come to the board meetings to learn, you know, how to run meetings. And like I said, you know, I like the Port of Brownsville. Actually, I do feel a lot of future there. Uh, you know, and I believe the airport also has future. You know, you guys know about a lot of projects that are happening in Brownsville. I don't have to tell you about what's happening in 2014, 2015. There's other projects coming in. And if this is a good decision to table it and make a more informed decision, so be it. Because if you believe it or not, I didn't hear about this deal until I came in today. You know, I'm coming in just to move my, you know, traffic. You know, the Port of Brownsville knows me. You know, the directors. Larry Brown knows me. So Larry Brown knows, I'm the only one that goes to the advisory meetings. Yes or no, Larry? You know? You know, I don't go every month. You know, I, I, I'm an entrepreneur as well. I gotta move stuff. But I do go to the advisory meetings. Uh, many times, I've tried to understand why they get appointed. Fine, that's the way it works. I do go to the BDC meetings. I do go to the JBic meetings. But it's kinda weird that I didn't hear anything about this until tonight. So I'm just giving you feedback that even though I'm informed, you know, it did, it didn't, it didn't go to the city somehow until it hit newspapers, which is sometimes negative. You know, so that's just, just my recap. Now, do you remember that I'm not known as nicknames or whatever, but sometimes I do consider myself an integrator? I integrate a lot of stuff. You know, we are part of the International Committee from Brownsville Matamoros. And if you believe it or not, integration is happening. Finally, after two years. I'm very happy on the historical moment that we live in, in Brownsville. And I do believe that decisions with informative, intelligent, smart, public comments will become a much more favorable result. Than all the negative, or hopefully today is positive. Uh, you know, is my feedback summary on it. So I don't know, you have any questions for me? I could take two? No questions? You sure? I'm practicing. All right. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, members of the commission. I do respect you guys. I know that, you know, uh, things like this happen. But I do understand that I'm speaking today as a citizen of Brownsville. I was born here, I was raised here. And I did go to the airport in the 80s when there was no airlines. I used to bike myself through there.
Well, Steve.
So I do have history.
Steve, I think you'd be, I think you're a fine young man. I would love to put you on one of the boards. And I'll be contacting you, believing your number with Estella. Maybe get you involved with boards. As far as being informed, nobody's ever informed in everything that goes on. I mean, we're, we're all busy people.
I agree with you.
But you know, the, it comes out in the paper, it comes out on the TV, it comes on the websites, comes all that. And things do get biased.
Yes.
And, um, sometimes it takes something like this, and it brings the people together and awareness, raises awareness.
Awareness.
But, you know, it should be with civility. It should be constructive. It should be in search of the truth. It should be in the best interest of our community. When people go out misinformed, and I'm talking about people that know how to get information, that come here and know about this. Get out of the blogs and, and personal attacks. Things that are not for the benefit of the issue, or the, or the, uh, the city.